Good morning, everybody. I would like to welcome you and start the December thirteenth committee of the whole meeting, call it to order. I would like to take this opportunity to respectfully acknowledge that Jasper National Park and the municipality of Jasper are on trees six and eight territories, as well as Maiti Region four. This land is the traditional territory, meeting ground, gathering place, traveling route and home for the Denezah, Nahihawak, Anashnabe, Sequamette, Stony Dakota and Maiti. Also, you have today's agenda in front of you. Are there any additions to the agenda? Counselor Demora?
I don't have an addition to the agenda, but as Counselor Keller, her MP is here, I just wanted to let everybody know that Thursday is her birthday. She should get a lot of welcome.
Do I have a counselor willing to make a motion to approve the agenda? Counselor Wilson? All in favor? The agenda is approved. You also have in front of you the Committee of the Whole Minutes from November twenty second. Is there any business arising from these minutes? I see no hands. If I please have a motion to approve the minutes. Counselor Waxer?
Do I have to?
I don't have to. They were print. Well, that was, you got your hand up. We'll get you next time. Moving on to Agenda Item Five, Delegations. We have with us today James Jackson from Tours in Jasper. And I will pass it over to him.
That thing? No, not yet. Wait, hold on.
If you've opened it.
There. Okay. There you go. Now we're good. All right. Uh, thank you, your worship and counselors. Um, I think that was pretty fitting, uh, because I was going to make some sort of joke about how long it's been since I've been in person in front of you all. So I've just conveyed to you how rusty I am, I suppose. So. Okay, perfect. Thank you. Uh, well, thank you again for having me. I know this is a very busy agenda today, so I appreciate your time very much. Uh, today I'm here to provide a little refresher on Tours in Jasper. I know I speak and work with many of you on a weekly basis, if not more often. Um, but I, I find it very important to sort of get in front of the community and remind the community what we do. At the same time, I'll provide a little bit of a synopsis of the economics of this past summer. Uh, do the same for this coming year and then provide a little quick update on a few initiatives that we are doing, uh, many of which in partnership with the municipality. So having said that, I will jump right into it, um, to slide three, actually. Um, so. More. Uh, our purpose is really to inspire visitors to, uh, visit Jasper and our vision is to be, you know, standing organization. Our vision, uh, is an internal one and we aspire to be, uh, a top DMO or destination marketing organization in Canada, positioning Jasper as a premier mountain destination. But as you all know, we have a membership style organization and so our mandate is to really return value to our, to our shareholders. But for us, it is about providing economic and social prosperity for the entire destination. Uh, even though we have a membership style based organization, we understand deeply that, uh, this is a team sport and, uh, we view our destination as a singular one, not our organization or any other, but a singular place. And so it's really important that, uh, we and the community work together. And so at the intersection of, uh, a few different perspectives, the visitor just sees Jasper, one place. And so it's really important that we stay grounded as an organization, uh, and to respect everybody's different perspectives. And so I always like to open presentations with this because, uh, the visitor just leaves Jasper, uh, with an experience. They don't have an experience about Tours in Jasper, the municipality or parks or the business community or residents. They just leave liking Jasper. And so we always like to really ground ourselves in that. Uh, ground ourselves in the fact that this is one community and, uh, and one Jasper, really. So quick refresher on, uh, our strategic plan. Uh, we, uh, like many organizations had to, um, refresh things, to say the least, in, um, twenty twenty, uh, like, like we all did. Uh, but we have a six-year strategic plan. I know we'll go too in depth, but it has four priorities. Uh, they are based around revenues, brand, community trust and elevating the destination, which really means sort of visitor experience. And each one of those has subsequent, uh, outcomes that we, uh, strive to achieve. And within that, there is, uh, this is sort of our framework. And so within that, we have two-year marketing sprints and that's really where we, uh, decide who and how we're going to market to the visitor, uh, not how much money we're going to spend. Uh, we do that annually within our annual business playbook. And so this strategic framework, we believe, is, is really effective in, um, uh, returning value, not only to our shareholders, but, uh, to be agile to various market dynamics. And, you know, if the last two or three years have taught us anything, uh, we need to be on our toes, to say the least. Uh, but at the end of the day, we have a singular goal. That whole plan rolls up into one number and that is eighty percent annual average occupancy. That's our goal by twenty twenty seven, the end of twenty twenty six. And, uh, there's a lot of math sort of behind this objective and a lot of rationale as to why we chose this over a variety of others. Uh, but we really feel that from occupancy, sort of everything else, uh, trickles down. Um, there is a case to be made for all sorts of, uh, other, uh, key performance indicators, but we really believe this. And we also think that it's approachable. People sort of get it. You know, if we started talking about macroeconomics, which I will later and you'll all sort of roll your eyes and fall asleep. But the occupancy, uh, side of things, people get, the garbage Jasper resident understands when the hotels are busy. There's more cars on the street, there's more people in grocery stores, they understand these kinds of things. And so we really, again, want to be, uh, transparent with this type of thing. Um, the opportunity, uh, with moving, um, to eighty percent occupancy is, uh, a big one. We, we've done a bit of math and we believe it's anywhere from, uh, it's, it would increase the total economic output of Jasper's visitor economy anywhere from, uh, up from seven hundred and eleven million dollars to eight hundred and seventy-six million dollars. So there's a big delta there, but it would increase things substantially. And so we think that's sort of Jasper's opportunity, uh, and we understand that, uh, everybody would benefit. But how we, uh, get there is, uh, complicated. And so we always talk about, you know, uh, defending summer, growing the winter, uh, growing the shoulder, that kind of thing. But we segment out our, uh, marketing plan based on the audience as well as the seasonality. And so to summarize this, I don't know, confusing slide. In the summer, we want to defend the peak season. In the shoulder, we want to increase length of stays. So get people from two nights perhaps to three. Uh, and then in the winter, we need to add new visitation because tonight, for example, occupancy would be quite low and we just need more, more rooms being sold. Uh, but to quantify that, um, for the, for the more mathematical folks in the room, um, it's basically ninety-one thousand incremental room nights. And on a per night basis, what that means is, uh, November through April, Sunday through Thursday, we need a hundred and forty rooms per night to get to eighty percent occupancy, which isn't outrageous. You know, a hundred and forty rooms per night, four days a week. That's it. That's the objective. So how we do that moving on is, uh, really through, uh, demand generation, which means sort of it's, it's uh, marketing speak for, you don't actually see a lot of work that we do because it's out in the, our target markets. And so I'd like to provide this slide with, uh, some context that a lot of the work that we do is to drive net new demand for the Jasper experience, which means, uh, even if you're in the city in Edmonton, for instance, you won't see a lot of the work that we're doing. It's either farther afield or in the business-to-business realm or overseas. Um, but I can, I can get into that if you would like to hear more. So looking at twenty twenty-two, um, we basically saw, um, uh, yeah, perfect, uh, a strong occupancy, but we still lag twenty nineteen. Uh, the blue, uh, number is twenty nineteen and the yellow is, uh, twenty twenty-one. And so we're close, uh, but we're still not there. And that's one of the big takeaways from today is that the visitor economy and Jasper's economy is still not there. Recovery has not happened, even though twenty-two and two is a strong year. It, we're still not there. But you can also see reading between the lines, the impact that the pandemic had on Jasper. And then even in twenty twenty-one, where we felt like it was very busy, there were lots of people here, lots of vehicles. Occupancy and spending did not recover. And so only now are we starting to flirt with twenty nineteen and we're still not even there. In terms of revenues, we are, uh, getting close, but we're not there. This is what I call Jasper's ECG. It's the heartbeat of Jasper, uh, and it mimics, uh, occupancy in many ways. But the industry revenues, uh, generally speaking, are made at those peaks and, uh, think we all try to sustain things at the valleys. And so you'll see that we still are, in, in July, we were flirting with, uh, sort of traditional revenues, but the rest of the year, we weren't even close. And so that makes up a lot of the shortfall, but we still have a long way to go. Um, so in terms of recovery, uh, there are a lot of things happening. Obviously inflation's on top of all of our minds, arrived, can had a ton of damage or did a ton of damage. And even though that's been, uh, for lack of a better term, fixed, uh, it did incredible damage to the visitor economy in this country. Uh, air and cruise travel continue to be a huge challenge. Uh, I'm not sure if everybody knows this, but the cruise business is absolutely essential to Jasper. Not many people would know that, but the cruise business is essential to Jasper because a lot of the passengers that arrive on the train also arrive to Canada on cruise ships or vice versa. So, uh, it's a absolutely an ecosystem in Western Canada and across Western US as well. And so there are lots of things that have, uh, a really big impact on Jasper. So cruising Victoria, Vancouver and all the way up to Alaska really matters. And so because those things haven't recovered, that means our visitor economy has not yet recovered to its, uh, full potential. As well, we're obviously competing with sun destinations, uh, like last year, there was pent-up demand for Jasper. All of you are probably dreaming about a sun vacation, if you haven't already had one. And so, uh, this is all to say that there are a lot of externalities and we're not quite there yet. So in terms of twenty twenty-three, I'll give a very, uh, ambiguous explanation of the market dynamics. So consumer confidence is at its lowest point excluding COVID since twenty sixteen. The US, uh, households during COVID saved two-point-three trillion dollars. They spent two trillion of it. So household spending is gone through the roof and they're burning through all their cash. A very similar ratio is, is, um, uh, in, in Canada as well. Uh, what about, um, uh, seventy percent chance that we'll have a recession next year? And then, and a scary one that I read this morning is that household debt is that in Canada is at a hundred and eighty-six percent. So people have spent their money and now they're starting to, uh, leverage credit, which isn't good for disposable income that you need to travel. Um, so that's a cautious tale. The top percentile of, you know, folks who do travel still have lots of money and they're, uh, wanting to spend it on travel. But the, the proportion of the population that visits Jasper predominantly in the winter is going to be struggling over the next while, I'll say, probably through to twenty twenty-five. Um, when we start to forecast revenues, again, we'll start to get there in absolute peak, the tip of the peak season, July and August, but the rest of the season, we're really still, uh, struggling. And I think through, uh, if the last couple of weeks have been any indicator, you'll start to see the valleys feel extra low. And so that's even, you know, first week of January, we see a lot in April, uh, even the latter half of, uh, of March. So a large portion of the year is not going to rebound or it's not going to feel like it did for the last few years. Um, in terms of occupancy, um, depending how the markets respond to that, it actually might drive occupancy. We'll see a bit of an equilibrium happen in terms of rate threshold in the winter. But the objective is that we'll start to increase the floor, uh, twenty twenty-four, that's a pretty far out projection. And so, and you can see the top of the summer starting to flatten. Uh, that's what we want to see. Uh, the next six months will obviously have a huge, um, impact on what actually happens. So that's sort of the market at play. What we're doing to ensure, uh, Jasper has sustainable demand is through our various partners. We leverage a lot of money, uh, through Travel Alberta Destination Canada. For instance, there's a campaign in market right now in the US valued at about two million dollars. Uh, that's not our money, that's someone else's that has Jasper's name on it to give you the volume of dollars that are being spent. Proportionately, what we spend directly out of our budget, uh, is in front of you. Twenty-seven percent, this is something I would like to highlight, is spent in Jasper on events, on activations, on developmental programs. And so, uh, in the latter half of the presentation, you'll sort of, you know, talk, here we talk about our priorities. That's really important to us and we're very proud of that. So, uh, I would like you just to, to leave with that today, that even though you don't see a lot of the stuff that we do, uh, a quarter of it is spent in Jasper. And you're starting to see more things, you know, the, the, the old steam engine is wrapped with lights. There's some other activations happening through Jasper in January, sort of our team is behind that, um, absolutely to their credit. And, uh, again, we're just very proud of that. So moving forward, I know we're tight on time here, so I'm gonna, uh, this is probably the most important part of the conversation, which is when I start speaking the fastest to try to blow over everything. Um, our priorities for the year, which are in our business plan, uh, basically are, um, increasing our sophistication with reporting. And that is in part due to a variety of, of sort of data and business intelligence functions, but it's also just a bit more about transparency. So we kind of internally call that prove it. When we, when I'm up here saying all this stuff, the culture internally that I'm asking our team and our board and our members to, to reply is, how do you know that? Prove it. Because we really want to be evidence-based. Uh, secondly, we really want to focus on the brand promise. And that's really about the experience that visitors have when they're here. We're out all over the world talking about how great this place is. But if we drop the ball on the one-yard line, you know, that's, that's, uh, not the best obvious outcome. And so we really want to embed, uh, delivering experience within our business plan. We also want to do a better job of telling our story, which is why I'm sort of here today. Uh, hopefully you'll hear from us a bit more regularly, not only in this room, but, you know, in the newspaper and other places. Uh, because we really want to, uh, tell the visitor economy story. There is some phenomenal work happening within our business community and we would love to share those stories. Uh, and then internal communications, we can't communicate externally if we don't sort of, uh, have ourselves organized internally. But if you read between the lines, fifty percent of those are community facing. And that's the theme with the, the next bit of the presentation, uh, is we really want to be more community facing. And so a few highlights, some things we have going on, uh, are obviously a Tours and Master Plan, which I'll get into in a bit more, um, detail in a second. But we're also really, really aggressively marketing for all of the reasons why I just explained. We feel that, uh, we need to first defend our market share, but, uh, really, really earn the winner business, uh, because we think the next eighteen months, two years will be a little challenging. Uh, and then finally, um, we believe to drive that type of visitation into winter and defend the summer, uh, like outlined in our plan. We need to evolve as an organization. And so that means, uh, being a bit more strategic with our investments and means scaling our organization. Um, it means, uh, building a strong foundation as an organization so we can deliver on that eighty percent goal. Um, short-term, I guess, that, that's all to say that the short-term concern is market share. The long-term concern is customer lifetime value. And so we really believe that we have an opportunity, given the destination, to generate a higher than previously experienced return visitation. So we have great return visitation in the winter within a regional market, but that's a very small market. We have a very small proportion of return visitation internationally, uh, which we're thankful for. But we believe that we can increase that, increase that significantly. And the way to do that is to provide an outstanding experience while the visitor's here. It's sort of just a low-hanging fruit. And so as you all know, as part of the Economic Recovery Task Force, um, a project was suggested that would sort of link all the partners around a unified vision for the visitor economy. And at the time, I think we were calling it a destination development plan and then it evolved into a Tours Master Plan. And now sort of in the back of my head, I'm thinking, you know, maybe we should be calling this a destination stewardship plan. Anyway, regardless of what we call it, the objective is to align and unify the destination and the visitor economy. That's what it's about. And so there are four sort of pillars that are being, um, refined, I'll say. And they, uh, revolve around people, place, experience and the economy. And we want to, uh, ensure that those four pillars are addressed as a visitor economy, which no single entity owns, by the way. Um, the work is underway. It's sort of stalled over the summer due to everybody's busy schedules. And then it sort of stumbled in the fall for a rather important incident that happened in the destination. Uh, anyway, we're back on track, um, and hopefully we can, uh, present to you in Q1 as to where that project's at. Um, without going into too much detail, implementation of that plan will mean a number of things. And some of the things, some of the initiatives are well underway. The transportation strategy being one, planning and planning discussions being another, um, the municipal housing corporation, the JCH, uh, being, but there are other ones that will be new initiatives suggested. And as an example, I'm not here sort of pitching this, but as an example, um, a logical outcome will be sort of increased strategic alignment between all of our organizations that address destination-related issues, uh, for, with the objective of sort of increasing collaboration at a more sophisticated level. And so an example of how we can expedite, uh, work that we do jointly would be through an event activation policy that council might pull together. And that might be something that, uh, is, that outlines the, the scope that administration can work within. Instead of me annoyingly having to come and ask for permission, um, to do things that you all usually agree with. So there, there are a variety of opportunities. I think that one would be a fantastic opportunity to work together even closer and sort of expedite fantastic visitor and resident experience. Um, but there are other ones like a destination-wide, uh, sustainability strategy. I think, you know, given where we live and given, uh, what's probably on the top of a lot of agendas these days is, uh, the importance of environmental and, uh, sustainable stewardship. Um, but as, as the mayor pointed out to us in a meeting a couple of weeks ago, um, things, things are pacing quite quickly. And, and at the end of the day, tourism needs to be a force for regenerative good within destinations and not just this economic transaction. And so given that we're in the park and given where we live, uh, I think it could be a fantastic global case study of how a community can come together to really leverage its strengths, being in this natural protected environment, but also providing fantastic experiences for visitors to give back to the community and the destination. Um, so finally, uh, three things that I'd like you to take away. Uh, I guess the first is just that Tourism Jasper really wants to be a bit more communicative within the destination. We want to be a bit more involved. Like I said, we are growing the organization, we have a bit more capacity than we've historically had. Uh, a large, uh, proportion of which is focused on, uh, community related. That twenty-seven percent of expenditures that we're spending in the community, we're, we're staffing up in that regard. So I, I would just leave you with that, that we want to lean in to community, community-related conversations. The second one is this Tourism Master Plan has the opportunity to, uh, create a lot of value for residents, for businesses, for the municipality, for, uh, everybody. Uh, but, uh, it will sort of only be as good as, uh, our ability to execute it. And so, um, I would also just suggest that we, once we're done that document, that you, uh, in partnership with all the other various partners, uh, remain committed to, to executing it. And then I know you all will, because many of the things in the plan were your ideas, uh, and, and working with Bill and the entire administration confident that that will happen. Uh, and then finally, you, you sort of, there was the whole first half of the conversation, the Jasper's visitor economy is not recovered. And I don't believe it will be fully recovered, let alone see real substantive growth until twenty twenty-five. And so, uh, if there's one thing, uh, till we do with today is just to have a bit of understanding towards, uh, the, sort of the, the main street businesses, because they're going to be the ones that I believe will feel it the most. Um, we're only now starting to see the debt servicing issues, uh, surface. Uh, a lot of the bigger organizations have bigger debt, uh, servicing facilities that they can leverage. Smaller businesses just don't. And the federal money, uh, has dried up and now those, uh, debtors are trying to, to call on that stuff. And so again, if there's one thing that'll leave you with today is to be, uh, understanding of the, of the business community and their position. So having said, all of that, unless there are questions, that's it for me. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much, James. That was great. Does any council have any questions for James or comments? Mr. Jackson, sorry. Casual morning, casual Tuesday morning. Counselor Demora?
I was just looking at around the room to see if someone wanted to go earlier. I just, uh, thank you very much, Mr. Jackson. It's, uh, it's always a pleasure to have you and it's nice to have you in front of us again. Um, every time you're here, I'm always reminded I'm not as smart as I think I am. So, uh, it's nice. Um, I want to, I wouldn't, I wish we could have a whole morning with you because I think the council would benefit from that and, and maybe down the road in the next quarter, like in the first quarter of Jasper, um, of twenty twenty-three, if you're not too busy, I, I would like to entertain further discussions because there's so much meat in this, um, you know, uh, package and then so many things to talk about. I want to go back to, I think it's the fifth slide of your presentation, sorry. And I think it's number ten of our agenda item, but it's just the mutual beneficial visitor economy. And you, you see the interaction with residents, government. I know the government has different layers, so does business and residents, as well as visitors. Um, I know we need to, to work towards enhancing our visitation product, uh, when we talk about achieving the eighty percent. Um, you know, there's, there's, we, we have to defend a certain segment and then there's growth. Uh, that involves bringing more people to work here in Jasper and we have challenges that way. Then also enhancing like the structure, the infrastructure and stuff. So the product looks nice and shiny when people get here. We still need to do a lot of work there. Um, on the, on that governmental sphere, what are, what is Tours in Jasper's expectations and needs from council and the municipality? Seeing that you're here and, you know, we're working in partnership with you. What are some of the, the things that we could be doing better with you or, or things to, to look forward to in growing, um, your eighty percent together? Was that too many questions on?
Yeah, I'm just trying to synthesize a, a concise answer. I, I I would, I would suggest that, at least in my short time, six years, almost six years in Jasper, uh, I've never felt a better relationship with the municipality. I think right now there, uh, is, um, outstanding working relationship, uh, day to day. I think there's also been fantastic embellishment from this council to address some larger issues, some very challenging issues that I think has to be commended with the, the degree of leadership that is required to address some of these issues. Um, and so, you know, I wouldn't, I wouldn't, uh, have one issue that I sort of wanted, had a bone to pick. Uh, I would just suggest that we continue to be ambitious in addressing those issues. And that we continue to, to commend each other, uh, you commend each other for the great work that you're doing. You know, there will always be challenges around budget. You, you had a, uh, challenging couple of weeks, uh, the last few weeks working through the budget. And, you know, you, you brought things down to a four-point rounding up five percent. Uh, you know, that's commendable. The business community obviously is going to have an opinion about that. We, we all understand that, but I think when we zoom out, uh, it's about providing outstanding quality of life for residents and, and visitors. And so I think as long as that's understood and that sort of, uh, remained officially or unofficially, the sort of mission, then, then I think we're good and if we can agree on that and then get some wins where we can around, you know, I think patios are on the agenda later or, or, yeah, communities in bloom, flowers. What the, the small, the small things end up making a really big impact. Uh, but that impact needs to be guided by sort of the, the long-term, uh, objective or mission to just provide an outstanding quality of life for visitors and residents. So I would say just kind of keep doing what you do.
Well, I appreciate that, that, you know, thank you for that and, uh, look forward to working more with you in the future. I just wanted to say that, uh, I liked how you, uh, noted our event in September as an important event there and not really, you know, signifying that it was painful for some people, but, uh, thank you.
Thank you, um, Counsel Wilson? Thank you. Um Council Wilson.
About five times, but always just off the first uh one. Uh yeah, it's pretty focused question and I just to to get one out there and like um last term, uh Tourism Jasper was a a big contributor to the CN stage. Uh fortunately, COVID uh really hit us hard directly after that. Uh we had a great event to to like a nod your this or to open a stage that uh just hoping that or my question is the Jasper events this year, are you planning on uh trying to fill that out a little bit?
Um so the answer is yes, but in a perfect world, someone else would do that. So we want that stage to be a community asset as and and a municipal asset and not uh a sort of like budgetary line item that we can uh scratch off. And so um we the short answer is, we get, we've been approached a few times for some very large acts, but the economics in peak season, summer, don't really make sense for us as an organization to carry the burden exclusively. Now, that's not uh to say that uh tier one concert in August uh is a bad idea. We think that's a fantastic idea. We think that it adds uh immeasurable, you know, a visitor experience indicators across the board. But um that's not really, that I I can't put a bunch of money behind something like that. So in a perfect world, we would partner with a folk fest or with an entrepreneur uh concert producer or something like that to make it happen. And we can be a contributing partner, but we can't uh carry the load exclusively in that peak season summer, because that's really when it comes to that, it's really not uh how we should be allocating our money. Um but we are very supportive of it. And uh we're we're trying to figure out a model where we can leverage the stage a bit more efficiently through a third party producer. Either um a not-for-profit or a for-profit um concert promoter. But we're, long story short, we're very supportive of what the folk fest is doing. We we've developed that relationship a bit better than historically uh we had. And so uh we're hoping that stages is leveraged a lot more moving forward.
Yeah, thank you for that. And and not to hang it all on Tourism Jasper because the municipality is a was a third party there as well and feel like we have to uh step up a little bit more and make use of the stage as best as possible.
Yeah, I I should say that Christopher's team though is has done great in in sort of listening to some ideas of various shapes and sizes and and not saying no off the hop, saying, okay, how can we make this happen? So um the administration is already sort of uh on the same page, I'll say.
Thank you. Um Counselor Melnick.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Hall. Um Mr. Jackson, my question goes to your market intelligence for twenty twenty three. And I'll frame it this way, um back in May, we would have been doing rendezvous for next year and so on. And you know, this summer I had a chance to talk to lots of people who talked about, we were gonna plan in twenty nineteen to be here in twenty twenty, twenty twenty two is when they came. What are the operators saying about twenty twenty three? Will there be that same carryover from people who couldn't travel? Or do you think we might see a decline in those individuals who were booked? Make the trip now. Um or, you know, is that going to be a strong contributor to uh next summer?
I think we'll have, we'll see a small amount of rebookings still um pushed over people that just kind of aren't comfortable or couldn't find the right price or the right time. Uh but that would be a significant minority of what we'll see. Our concern is that that pent-up demand has relieved itself. And now we're in a market, uh a a more organic global market, but our competitors are absolutely pouring money into the market of both private and public sector. So national DMOs in South Africa, for instance, are really putting their pedal to the metal. Uh same thing in the winter, we're not competing with them, we're competing with Mexico. And so um I think uh pace is strong for now, but it's not where it's been historically, even pre-COVID. So there's been a market shift and I I I don't want to get too into it, but booking windows have shrank and so operators are starting to be a bit more comfortable with that lack of book uh business on the books because they know folks will just show up. But um because of all the externalities that I outlined earlier, we're a bit um more hesitant, I guess, is the answer. And so the volume of business on the books will be uh lower than it was this time last year, if that makes sense.
Great. Thank you very much for that.
Thank you. Uh Mayor Ireland.
I'm almost as new as Mr. Jackson. Thank you, Deputy Mayor Hall. If I may, I have uh two questions and one sort of observation suggestion, actually a question. Um I have a micro question and a macro question, so I'll start with the micro. It seemed a bit mundane. Um where you have quantified the goal of achieving eighty percent, um the immediate objective is a hundred and forty room nights uh for midweek. What does that look like in terms of uh percentage increase on available room capacity for that period? And how many hotel rooms does this community have that are available? November to mid-April and what would an extra hundred and forty room nights oh look like? I should have been prepared for this. Uh I don't have the exact number, but the um
I'll I'll speak maybe in occupancy. So on the weekends, the reason why it's not in there is because we're already hitting eighty on a regular basis. It's the midweek that's pulling the average down significantly. So Sunday through Thursday, we might hit as low as thirty percent, even lower. And so that's why we need at least a hundred and forty rooms per night, Sunday through Thursday, to uh raise the floor, basically. Uh I'm not sure if this is exactly your question, but there's lots of capacity to do that. And in fact, you might not even notice a hundred and forty rooms per night across the entire destination. But it's enough mathematically to to pull things up.
I could look at that. I just, I tried to get a handle on on scale. Um and it would help if I knew how many rooms were available. I I think there are about twenty-two hundred rooms available at peak season, but that includes outline commercial accommodation, I believe, which mostly is offline, or at least a lot of it is offline.
Yeah, including, including home accommodation. Um we usually say it's close to the uh two thousand three hundred and fifty. Um and in the uh winter, roughly speaking, it's two thousand. The the issue, though, underneath the surface is that um is is Counselor Melnick can probably explain better than I can and um just because there's two thousand rooms doesn't mean there's two thousand rooms available. And so between uh upgrades, construction, or just closing off wings of hotels because their occupancy is so low. Um there isn't um the numbers just aren't are black and white, I guess. However, if we can provide enough business that folks can operate, that means that uh frontline workers can get more hours and and hopefully the the objective is to not have an erratic ECG, but counterintuitively, a bit more of a flatline. That's what we're looking for.
All right. Thank you for that. Um so the second question is is at the macro level and you had a slide on that. Um and I'm interested in particular about the level of consumer confidence and whether that is a generalized consumer confidence or related at all to the destination. And the question is, is there anything that we, as a municipal government, might be able to do to improve commuter um consumer confidence in the destination? And what message can we get out to help drive visitation in terms of consumer confidence uh in this particular destination?
Um so to address the first half of your question, uh that stat is a Conference Board of Canada uh statistic at the you know, most macro level in Canada. And I think the driving force behind that um is a lot of the social psychology of like economics. People kind of get freaked out when they keep hearing um the news this week of rate hikes and and that kind of thing. Um you know, seasonality compounds that going into Christmas. And then you start hearing other things like a one hundred and eighty-three or eighty-six percent um, you know, consumer debt or household debt. Uh I I think there's a large psychological component to it. Um so that's at the macro level. I think your question is a a fantastic one about what the municipality, perhaps the entire community can do. And I think the maybe a bit more of a wishlist, but the answer would be to convey uh a unified and welcoming visitor economy. That's a big pervasive question or 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 request, but the the takeaway from that, which is a large body of work, would be that visitors feel wanted and welcome uh to come to Jasper, both regionally and and internationally. And then once they do come, they have an outstanding, true-to-place experience. And so I know that isn't a very specific answer, but I think if we can institutionalize within the community, uh you know, across the municipality parks, but most importantly, residents and 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 businesses, that we love to host visitors and we appreciate their business. If we can really institutionalize a culture of welcoming them, then I think we can address some of those concerns. But that's a, that's a long-term and big objective.
That's a great answer. Thank you. And it gives us something to focus on in a general sense, and I wasn't looking for anything more detailed than that, but that's excellent. Thank you. And so the last um question is just the area of collaboration and you touched upon that when you spoke about implementing um the plans. And so I'm just interested in your thoughts of the role of the Jasper Partnership Initiative and whether say it was specific um to an event activation policy, whether you think um there is need for and possibility of or the, an activation policy endorsed by all members of the Jasper Partnership. Because one of the, one of the issues is that um there are so many moving parts that anybody who wants to um activate an event um has to go to a number of different stops to get it all sorted out. So if we all had um a combined policy that was endorsed by each of the member organizations and those who who have uh sort of some skin in the game, so to speak, um do you see that as a viable option?
I could not support that idea more. I think that's an outstanding idea. Um I've I've had the privilege of producing lots of events in my career, many outside of Edmonton or in Edmonton, many in Jasper and then other places. And the uh multi-jurisdictional destinations are the exception in the event world. And from a competition perspective, uh DMOs, we build our organizations around being easy to work with and being able to navigate whatever jurisdiction you're in. And so when we were in Edmonton, for instance, we built uh a a strategic partnership, like a joint venture between the city and us uh to address this exact issue. And in Jasper, there's just more layers, um which is, which is fine. But I think vetting that through the J P I would be a phenomenal idea. Um because as much as you know, Patty and I like to say that that we represent, you know, the businesses, we can have blind spots too. And I think to have their endorsement uh and and contribution to the policy would be a phenomenal idea. And I think it would go a really long way.
Thank you, Mr. Jackson. Thank you, Deputy Mayor, allowing me three questions.
Thank you, Counselor Waxer.
Yes, I just wanted to say that I was intrigued and interested in your concept of repeat visitation and thought about my own behavior in terms of how I tend to go back to the same hotel uh for reasons, you know, or uh and exploring what those reasons were and and tend to often go back just some of the same places in Canada and internationally. So I think that it's a really interesting strategy and I think really well worth exploring.
No, thank you. Yeah, I think um we're really uh focused long-term, looking longer than ten years, on customer lifetime value. And and uh that's about creating deep, meaningful experiences when there are visitors in Jasper. So yeah, thank you for that.
Thank you. Are there any other comments? I think everyone has spoken and online questions were asked. So can I please have any motion to receive this important information? I'm gonna go with Counselor Waxer because she tries to get in there. Counselor Waxer, all in favor? So thank you very much, Mr. Jackson, for this great part.
Thank you for allowing me to be here. Thank you.
Okay, um moving on to agenda item five point two, Community University Partnership, School of Public Health, U of A, it's well there. Oh, excellent.
We're here.
Welcome.
Thank you. Uh thank you. I'm just going to um to pull up my uh my presentation and share it with you. So thanks very much. I know that you have a very tight schedule, so I'm going to do my best to walk you through what was a very lengthy amount of information um and just be able to talk to you about the context and considerations that we've found and discovered in our work about helping you create um a strategy for early learning and care for Jasper. I'm Karen Edwards, the Director for the Community University Partnership, and I'm obviously not Dr. Rob Bushman. Um but Rob, uh in the interim of finishing this piece of work, has moved on to work with children's services. So uh Mary Frances Smith, who is a graduate student, um who worked alongside Rob doing some of the analysis uh is with me today as well to help present to you um the findings from our, from our work. And uh Mary Frances says, I'm glad she's with me because she has a tremendous amount of professional experience in this space as well. So our goal for our work was to give you the context and feedback uh from community and from best practices about what you might need to consider in developing a strategy. And we had three main goals in mind uh when doing this work of understanding the current state of childcare in Jasper, trying to describe what a future state could look like, and producing a set of recommendations about how we might get from one to the next. So who did we speak to? How did we provide this information to you? We did a parent and guardian survey in June and July where we had sixty-three responses and seventeen partial responses. I'm going to refer to this survey and I want you to note that when I do, we need to interpret the findings from that survey cautiously because the number of responses to the survey was low. So we can't necessarily um extrapolate to say these are the views of all um parents in Jasper, but at the same time, I think it gives council a snapshot. We did a series of interviews and focus groups uh through May and June with forty-four total participants that came from all forms of licensed and unlicensed care within the community, uh the business community, uh municipal staff and council, as well as Parks Canada and even the Friends of Jasper Childcare. And we did a review of some of the documents provided to us um by the municipality as well. As we go through and talk about the report, you're going to notice we have um five main categories that we talk about. And those categories are drawn from the multilateral early learning and childcare framework. And those include accessibility, affordability, flexibility, inclusivity, and quality. And unfortunately, those are not discrete items. Those categories definitely overlap and those issues are interrelated. And and you'll see it as we talk about one, it's like pulling on a string um and it pulls the other. So um keep those categories in mind as we go through. The next series of slides, which are green, are going to walk us into what the current quality of uh or sorry, the current state of affairs for early learning and care looks like. And in Jasper, um resoundingly, all participants saw childcare in Jasper as high quality. The sentiment appeared to be largely driven by that positive perception of Wildflowers and its staff. It's woven into the community. It's seen as an excellent place to work. And its high quality actually inspires feelings of pride. Um we had comments from early childhood educators and from parents about um how much they appreciate the advocacy for early learning in the community and just the high standard of care that that produces and what that even looks like in their own children's development. When we looked at accessibility, um participants really widely agreed, there's not enough childcare spaces in Jasper. So the reasons for that include a lack of spaces for programming, a lack of early childhood educators, or even barriers that providers related to licensing and really regulations. Um and this board member's quote illustrates those um those items quite well, actually. When we looked into the parent and guardian survey around accessibility, similar sentiments were there. Space being very limited, when people share spaces, that's difficult. Two out of five respondents in our survey had just trouble finding care in the last three months prior to the survey. And twenty-four percent of respondents said they currently had at least one child on the waitlist. And of those folks, eighty percent had been on that waitlist for six months. And twenty-four percent of respondents said they currently had at least one child on the waitlist, and of those folks, eighty percent had been on that waitlist for six months. Fifty percent had been on that list for over a year. When we looked at affordability, one of the most common observations, childcare is expensive. And even this comment from a business community member um and their own, almost their own personal experience of just, I was basically working just not to be with my children. Um, so that cost was very expensive. Um, and those child programs remain entirely dependent on parent fees. The cost of childcare appears to be getting cheaper with the agreement, but actually, lower-income families aren't really seeing as much benefit as middle or upper-income families. When we looked at the parent guardian survey. There were a lot of comments about the affordability be it being expensive, but things becoming more affordable when they were approved for that subsidy. Thirty-two percent of respondents indicated that childcare was somewhat to very unaffordable. Accessibility really revolved mainly around hours. Jasper's childcare doesn't uh work, or sorry, does work on conventional working hours in the weekday. Um, and a lot of participants who spoke to us noted the need for longer hours, like evenings, weekends, uh, and which is illustrated in this business community um. Comment, which would relate to James's um. Whole presentation around tourism and that being one of the drivers for for what Jasper's all about. So those business times are on nights, weekends, and holidays, and daycares are closed. In the parent guardian survey. There were comments like Jasper isn't a nine-to-five, isn't a Monday to Friday, nine-to-five kind of town, so it'd be nice to have those extended hours. And of our respondents within the survey. Twenty-five percent of them indicated needing some form of extended hours. When we looked at inclusivity, overall participants thought that childcare in Jasper was inclusive. There's opportunities for French-speaking um speak, French-speaking community. Programs are seem to be culturally sensitive, and higher-need children's needs are generally met. There are these two quotes that we chose in the voice from your community, really, I think, illustrate some of those pushpoints in inclusivity about if you're a newcomer to Canada. Your understanding of how to access or the context for early learning and care can be very complicated. Or even people saying, we're trying our best to meet the needs of kids that might have extra needs. But at the same time, there's systemic and structural issues within that. So that's the current state. And we also talked to individuals about what their future state might be. What are the aspirations? And resoundingly, across the board, people are looking at all families having access to a variety of childcare options. That childcare is affordable, plain and simple. That it's flexible to meet those highly variable schedules that Jasper families experience. That you continue to build on uh childcare um inclusivity that we you currently have within your programming. And that Jasper's already high-quality childcare is even better, and that the town has a reputation of being a great place to be an early childhood educator. Participants also, though, observed and acknowledged that there were obstacles to getting to some type of future state such as that. And those obstacles can feel a little bit different, whether those are around childcare or around family day homes. So for childcare. Um, physical spaces are limited within the town. Um, we know that there are. Limitations around development. Jasper's a part, and that creates um certain types of regulations, and that there that much of the available space that there is is reserved for residential housing. There's multiple authorities over that land use, so land use, planning, and development are overseen by parks. And those layers of regulations can cause challenges, especially actually in the family day home space if they're looking at uh running um things within rentals. There's a housing crunch, and so the cost and scarcity of housing prevents businesses, including Wildflowers, from recruiting enough staff. That people acknowledge that offering more flexible hours isn't exactly straightforward. So if you offer those extra hours, you need. Staff to cover those hours, you need space to offer those hours, and that's the. My analogy of pulling a string on one end and it pulls the string on other aspects. And childcare, people acknowledge childcare is really just one of many issues that you're dealing with in the municipality as well as provincially. But there is also um a sense that some local community leadership would be really great to be able to continue to rally in this space. Um, and be able to offer much more um contextual leaders that would be able to convene conversations and continue to advocate in this space. Specifically around family day homes, there are insurance regulations around opening a family day home. Within a rental property, because those might be the properties that are available, so there are um obstacles for for that form of care. And that if you are a family day home, you need a family day home agency to provide oversight for those homes. And so we might have too few uh. Day homes to provide a full caseload for an for an agency. So how do we get from what the current state is to what this um future state could be? If we stick to our categories, accessibility options really, um, and when we talk to people, there are a lot of actually of. Locally grown um. Suggestions, and so we wanted to illustrate those as well as we presented our findings back to you. But when it came to accessibility within Jasper and thinking about future state. Um, the municipality could make a variety of changes to land use to encourage the development of new childcare programs in the area. The changes could either make it easier for new programs to locate to Jasper or require developers to help create childcare spaces. You could look at additional municipal childcare programs or locations, so simply looking at. What we have, which is amazing, which is Wildflowers, and create more spaces to that program. Um, or look at some of the other um examples of trying to work with not-for-profits to run um childcare spaces. There are provincial grants that could improve accessibility. There's a current childcare space creation grant to help nonprofit providers increase space in existing programs. And there may be more at the beginning, begin to grow as the Canada-Alberta Agreement begins to take hold. More full, more fully. Um, you could also provide municipal grants, loans, or other assistance, so childcare-specific grants or loans to help operators establish new programs or expand existing ones. The locally-grown ideas of using available spaces creatively, people were mentioning things about what about the library, the fitness center, the aquatic center, or. Trying to supply additional childcare with existing buildings and facilities. And people even mentioned, um, I think a local church that is um is repurposing. There might be opportunities there. They also looked at changing relevant regulations. Um, so maybe looking at zoning and land development regulations that could be adjusted to facilitate the use and development of physical childcare spaces. And looking more at formal collaborations that could be locally grown. Someone had mentioned there's a similar initiative around housing. Where you have a collaboration between organizations and institutions, and that may be advocating for childcare priorities in the community. Um, would um benefit from that kind of collaboration. When we uh look at affordability considerations. The options that depend solely on the municipality. They're expensive. So even with federally-supported affordability grants and the parent subsidies implemented in early twenty-twenty-two. You could consider two different aspects of just directly assisting, sorry, providing direct assistance to lower fees for all parents within the community. Which would mean subsidizing municipally families to access childcare um with some form of affordability grant or subsidy. But that type of option, you'd really need to consider. What would be eligible for those grants or subsidies? Do you do licensed and unlicensed, in which case then you get into a um. A sticky space of risk and liability. When we're looking at unlicensed options, would you include out-of-school care in that option? Because currently, the Canada-Alberta Agreement does not. Um, if we lower prices, then we increase demand and we create a bit of a cycle. And then there's always a careful balance of minimizing the burden to families and the municipality itself. You could also consider direct assistance for lower fees for wildflower parents specifically, through something like introducing a fee scale. At Wildflowers, where you could do an income-based subsidy. But that's not really a Jasper-wide affordability solution. When we think about flexibility, again, that revolves a lot around those hours. How can you provide more flexibility? So if we increase the number of early childhood educators, which is needed to provide more hours. You could think about offering, you'd need more educators present in the community. Could that be offered through a one-time incentive payment to attract new E C Es? Or could you add um to the provincial top-up that is offered to E C Es or offer housing or educational assistance to them? And advocating um more broadly and broadly, as others are across the province, for E C compensation and benefits. There may be provincial opportunities that will arise as the Canada-Alberta Agreement again begins to unfold a little bit more. And some of those locally-grown ideas, we're looking at maybe new types of childcare, exploring how you work with Jasper businesses to create onsite daycares. Or extend programming more generally for children, using those space and events, looking for opportunities for more socialization. Around inclusivity, um, there was um. There are options to consider just about that communication level, and it's one of the comments before about newcomers. Space really, and I hazard to say, not just the newcomer space, but all of people's understanding who might be sitting on those waitlists. How do we reach out to new residents about childcare? Helping people to understand what the obstacles are. So they understand how they might be able to um. Have their needs met. And there were some suggestions around exploring opportunities to provide cultural, more cultural diversity in programs by increasing the focus on First Nation, Métis, and Inuit teachings. Uh, and culture, and possibly including bringing in elders into that space. And quality, which is something that obviously was um resounding through Wildflowers. Um, if the municipality was to consider and focusing in on quality issues, that might require. You looking into those unlicensed providers, so requiring maybe municipal licensing, one option uh for unlicensed providers. That option would include minimum safety standards on your end, first aid training, or maybe other eligibility options that you deem are useful. One benefit from that kind of a consideration would be that that would would certainly give you a better sense of the number of unlicensed providers within town. That was one thing that. There is a whole host of what we don't know about how many people have nannies or providing other sort of un. Um, unconventional or unlicensed forms of care for their kids. Um, you could also look for quality in insisting educators with more training and education. And looking to explore professional development needs, and whether that's creating something locally, which is what the last uh bullet point offers of of. Maybe something very local, where we're training our own ECAs, but that would need to be considered. Um, would need to consider the certification process in Alberta, or whether it's publicizing opportunities that come from the province. And the final consideration um that was um. Offered was under advocacy and leadership. So. If the municipality was to advocate for greater affordability. That would mean needing to understand and monitor affordability so that you really understand your um your own context. It might mean engaging or talking with the implementation committee uh that's. To my understanding, still in the making, under the Canada-Alberta Agreement. It might mean advocating, working with other municipalities close by to um to actually um. That magnify and catalyze those messages uh through provincial government, or even advocating with Alberta-wide organizations. Some local grown. Options that were presented was were that the municipality might play a bigger role. There was this. The. Perspective of the municipality that you already provide a great deal of leadership in this space, could we continue to lean into that opportunity? Play a bigger role as a facilitator and perhaps a convener of conversations? Or even looking to advocate for provincial funding opportunities. And the final option was looking to the municipality to support local community leadership, and I think this. Also harkens back to one of the earlier points about just being that rallying of facilitator for that conversation. And perhaps there's an opportunity to convene a local early learning and childcare council that could monitor and examine issues. Within the municipality and then provide recommended actions back to the council. So, thank you so much for um providing us with the opportunity to present that back to you today. Um, I will put a caveat to say I'm not Rob, so there may be, I will do my very best to answer your questions, and if there are any. Questions that I can't answer, I do commit to going back to Rob and and talking to him and bringing those responses back to you.
Thank you very much for this report. I'm looking to council for questions. Oh, Mr. Ginn.
Deputy Mayor Hall, maybe I'll just add, from an administration perspective, of course, to point out that this is related to the item on the agenda that's coming up. Under seven-one, the Early Learning and Childcare Strategy, uh, Ms. Daniel is here to support that discussion. So council. Uh, can ask any questions that you might have of the presenters, uh, but there is some action arising uh under item seven-one when we when we get there. Um, and so that's where you may have uh some more from administration, and you'll see those recommendations that arise from the strategy and the research that's been done by the uh by the university partnership.
Thank you for that. Um, as a former employee of Wildflower Center, I absolutely can say that I was very proud to work there and always felt very connected to the community in my time there. I have a quick question for Ms. Daniel. How many families are on the waitlist?
Um, right now, we have eighty-one families moving. So, um, just to kind of clarify that, um, not all of those families are looking for care right now. Some of those families are currently pregnant, so maybe looking for care sometime in the next two years.
Thank you. Councilor DeMota.
Well, just, thank you very much for this presentation, and uh I just want to congratulate everybody. Uh, on every level, uh, you know, I I don't, I it's not like self-recognition, pat on the back, but I I think this investment is is well-spent. Uh, we needed to get this information. Um, a lot of us knew. Uh, much about it, and then just even on the surface, understand some of the the content in here, but to to get a solid review like this and and information. And uh things that we're going to discuss. And uh later on today, I I think it's really important. So um I'm grateful to have this in in front of us, and I think it's it's healthy. Hopefully, more people in the community can see this and and understand some of the challenges, but some of the the great things that uh the municipality is providing. So I appreciate the work behind this. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor DeMota. Councilor Waxer.
I just wanted to say that I am deeply concerned about the uh. The impact of the Canada-Alberta childcare strategy on the lower-income families. And I, from my own research, I know that this isn't just here, it's it's around the province. Uh, do you have optimism that uh this situation will rectify in in the next few years? And do you believe that we will, in fact, reach the ten-dollar-a-day uh. Uh, threshold?
That's not a difficult question to answer. Um, I I I think maybe all we can be is hopeful at this point, um, knowing that the conversation is open, and I think that the opportunity to. Feed as many voices into that conversation, I think, is, the door is open. And the opportunities are there, and I think voices of municipalities such as yours, which have a very firm grip. On uh early learning and care like you do, and the um the uh opportunities that you already offer. Um, and even this report gives you voice, right? A bit of voice for what is actually your current state of affairs. And um, and I know that there's leadership within uh Wildflowers, at least, to be able to continue to provide that kind of voice. So um, we're hopeful. And if we've sent somebody good like Rob over to that part of the world, then. There's good voices there, too.
Thank you. Uh, Mayor Ireland.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Hall. My question to. The presenters, um. Thank you very much for their for the presentation. Following on Counselor. Waxer's. Question, um. This might be even more difficult. But. I am. Inclined to assume that when the. Ten-dollar-a-day. Program was announced. The intent was to provide assistance. Beginning with the most vulnerable. And yet, what I hear is that that has not been. The result. Can you help explain to me? So I can explain to other residents. How the program is configured in such a way? That the most vulnerable. Uh, that is, the ones at the lower end of the economic scale. Are benefited the least, or perhaps not at all, by the program. How in the world did that ever come out? That must not have been the intent.
Um, Rob has created an entire report on the indexing of these subsidies for families, um, which does provide context for that. Um, so, and there are. Again, I still feel like there are opportunities to continue to push. In that space. So because it is so now, I don't think that there isn't space for conversation about how that could shift and change. At the federal level and at the provincial level, again, they are creating spaces for conversation. Um, and when we are able to illustrate, as uh Rob's report did, the fact that the lower-income families are actually not benefiting as much as middle and income families. That there's space to be able to have those conversations and say, then, how do we shift those subsidies and then the indexing to be able to better. Um, meet the needs. Mary Frances, I don't know if you have anything to add, because you're in really different conversations too with educators.
Yeah, the each province had an opportunity to negotiate the contents of the agreement and how parts of it were going to be rolling out. So it's kind of complex. The intent was to create a system of early learning and care, uh but there's some uh economic realities of Alberta uh context. Um so like Karen said, I we're hoping that this policy window is an opportunity to continue to have those conversations and exactly like you said, um support the the people who need it the most.
If I might continue, then I take it that our optimal role then is as an advocate um on behalf of the program. Should that advocacy be directed primarily at the province, or is there an element that should be directed at the federal government?
That's a good question. Um and I don't know that I have a confident firm answer on that. I feel that eventually the the window is certainly wide open at the moment because they are in the midst of making that, although to be to be fair, I believe it's the implementation committee that I indicated before in the presentation, isn't actually active yet. So the fact that that committee is not even active yet indicates certainly, I would say, keeping your eye on both of those levels to know where the right window of opportunity is. Your messaging likely will be very similar in either one of those spaces. So your voice may not feel as loud, perhaps federally, um just from geographical and and the connections to a federal picture. But I think that it is, uh because you provide those rich stories, that rich content and on the ground in the trenches reality to say, this is what it looks like on the ground here in our town and municipality. Um and I think that especially because it's a rural context, that becomes even more important. So I I would say that I would be aware of both levels of where your voice is useful. Um and it could be that at the moment provincial is where those majority of opportunities are. I'm not saying they are, and that's going to be an ongoing evolving thing to keep your um finger on that pulse. But I think also as certain portions of the um agreement begin to unroll and that implementation committee becomes active, there may be spaces as well for a more federal-focused messaging. Mary Frances, would you add any list to that?
Uh the only thing I would add is the National Advisory Council has been uh appointed and Christopher Smith from the Matart Conserv uh Foundation is on that. So I believe you have access to at least uh a person Alberta, Alberta based person that might help you with that advocacy.
And that's a fantastic point, actually, Mary Frances. Thanks for that. Um because Matart Foundation was engaged and very interested in this work. Your work in in connecting to their sense of what their municipality is interested in, and so um direction, direct connection with him actually is a fantastic idea of just figuring out where those federal opportunities might be.
Thank you both. That's very much appreciated. Um advocacy is one of our strategic priorities as a council, but knowing where to direct that advocacy is absolutely critical to to any hope of success. Thanks for pointing us to those directions.
Counselor Waxer. I I'm wondering whether I uh uh resolution to the Alberta municipalities um might be a a good way of garnering a stronger voice on this.
Thank you for that. Counselor Demota.
Yeah, you know what? I really like the uh the question that the mayor asked. And I know that we have a we have two people uh outside our community and our MLA and our MP that uh really like to support Jasper and understand some of the challenges we have here and have gone to bat for us. Um you know, and of course, other um communities and their constituencies, but I I think that could be another step too. Um I know that federally we've had to to get a voice um heard in in parliament at one time, and um I think this could be a good speaking note for one of our representatives there. Um I'm looking forward to to advocating for helping the the more vulnerable in our communities.
Thank you. I have one last question. I know you said the uh parent surveys were kind of low numbers, but this might be might maybe towards Ms. Daniel. Would you say that that is sort of the sentiment you feel from parents, even though they maybe didn't do the survey? Is that what you're kind of getting in the center?
Uh you mean all the results?
Yeah.
Uh yes and no. Next, I guess.
Any other questions from Counselor or comments? And is this one we are receiving for information? I do not have it online.
Deputy Mayor, uh you'll see in the RFD that there was a motion to receive the presentation for information, so they're just a little bit out of sync, because there's a few items in between, but I'll get a chance to make to close off the presentation and thank our presenters by making that motion request for decision comes up.
Okay, thank you. Thank you very much, ladies, for tuning in and providing us with the great word.
Thank you so much.
Moving on to, we will take, I mean, let's get through one more and then we'll take a break. I feel like that's what we can do. Counselor Demota.
Well, just before we finish off on this, um there was uh a comment made in and um and a note in the presentation about the obstacle about housing in in our community and and staff housing um to properly support our services here, and I'm wondering if it would be worth our while to investigate or have a study on where some other pinch points are for providing service uh from the municipality to the to the greater uh community. And I'm just asking that because I know that, you know, there was a reference made here, but um we had a question out in one of our surveys, and even though housing is one of our strategic priorities, municipal housing to help facilitate services in the community doesn't really hit a top level um in our and your average resident as far as importance goes, but you know, when you when you start to take off some layers here, you see how important it is, and I I think that we need to really focus on a little bit more investment and and I'm just not talking about new housing projects, but in overall investment, uh you know, more facilitating our staff and attracting new and and retaining people in our community. Thank you.
Thank you. Moving on to agenda item six correspondence, we have some correspondence uh around public safety and emergency services. Don't know if anyone's tuning in or might pass it over to Director Ginn.
Thanks very much, uh Deputy Mayor um Hall. Uh so uh council is aware of some recent changes with respect to the provision of uh victim services. Uh this letter was received uh from the Minister of Public Safety and Emergency Services, but I assume is the minister responsible now after the recent cabinet uh reconfiguration. Uh and I would say that it's uh clear that other municipalities have also been asking questions about the changes to delivery of victim services within the province. So this uh letter is here for council's information. Um I I think uh the motion today or the most likely action today is for council to receive it for information. Um and then council can consider whether uh you know, you see any individual opportunities to advocate um or whether there's uh sort of a collective that council would like to take a specific position. Um but this this letter came through as general correspondence, administration thought it was wise to bring it, uh given the fact that council recently discussed um the provision of victim services at the municipal budget and uh that partnership with the Jasper Community Team Society for Crisis Response.
Thank you, Director, or CEO Ginn. Uh Counselor Waxer.
I appreciated uh seeing the clarification on uh the with the new rollout uh that the new victim services model would in fact serve Albertan who've been traumatized by uh noncriminal and tragic events. That has been a point of uh contention and concern in the past, so it that's a very clear statement in this letter.
Other comments from council? Uh Mayor Ireland.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. I'm struggling to read a motion. I was struck by um the second last paragraph on page two of the letter. And it is a point that Counselor Waxer has just referenced. Um and that is whether there will be a reduction in scope of service um for noncriminal trauma. And despite the assurances in the letter, um I'm not sure that I accept that statement. And so my inclination is to make a motion directing administration to review any change to service levels within our area of jurisdiction related to services or victims of noncriminal trauma and report back to council. I I would like to be armed with facts and then respond to this letter, but I I have anecdotal evidence from community members that services have suffered and are likely to suffer further. And yet, this letter from the minister um reports to say that is absolutely not the case. If we're going to take a position and advocate, it should be a position founded on facts. Um I think we need some facts, hence my motion to direct administration to review and report back with respect to the level of service provided in our community to victims of noncriminal trauma.
Counselor Waxer.
I wondered whether we might consider the uh second last paragraph on the third page invites us to uh have direct contact with the new director of uh victim services, and I wondered if it might be worthwhile having a conversation inviting him to make a presentation to the council meeting.
I wouldn't oppose that, but I would still like to go into such a meeting armed with facts, and I I need some facts to to support a position that I think we can legitimately take. Um and that Mr. Forsberg might be the one to speak to, but first I think we should get our our own facts in order so that we know what we're what we are presenting.
Counselor Melnick.
Through you, um Deputy Mayor Hall. Uh the current victim services caseworkers, um what what numbers are those currently here in Jasper?
Uh Deputy Mayor Hall through to Counselor Melnick. Um I I couldn't actually tell you that right now. We are not, um the research that the mayor is referencing has not been done to this date, so I cannot tell you. What I can tell you is um that the Jasper Community Team Society is working very hard to get the crisis team back up and running, as you've heard, and one of the impacts that we are aware of is that the uh caseworkers, sorry, that the initial uh volunteers that would respond in a crisis are not allowed to be both BSU or Victim Services Unit vol- uh Victim Services uh volunteers and the crisis team volunteers. And so that in the past, they have been one in the same. So there is certainly an impact I can speak to today, but further information I would have to uh go back and and do the research on the air speaking.
Thank you for that, and and I think that references uh the top paragraph on page three. Um I think we referenced the second paragraph on page three, but the top paragraph talks about how onboarding would occur and what it appears is that this could potentially exclude individuals who were involved in Jasper.
Um Deputy Mayor Hall through to Counselor Melnick. Uh the caseworker or the paid person who would coordinate the volunteer response and the other response in this community, that position has been posted. Uh uh I believe at least twice and has not yet been filled. Uh there is certainly a paid person in uh in Hinton who is responsible for victim services response for this region, including Jasper. Uh but we do not, as far as I know, yet have a local casework person in that position.
Thank you, Judge Reed. See no other hands? I feel like Mayor Ireland might have a motion ready for us?
No, I thought I'd give you that motion. Um uh you can give me just write something out, so it's Right, if if I may, um my motion is to direct administration to review and report back to a future community level meeting regarding local impacts on service levels for victims of noncriminal trauma.
Thank you for that. All in favor? That motion is carried. Hey, we're gonna get through six point two and then we'll take a break. Moving on to six point two, Jasper Employment and Education Centre request. Do you know if Ms. Marku is on the Zoom? Okay, I might pass this over. Counselor Keller.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Um I apologize for being late ahead of meeting this morning. Um the um Jasper Employment Centre and I saw a word for the uh community designated under the Rural Renewal Program for um workers under the reformer program, and um unfortunately no funding came with the designation. So um Ms. Marku is working with Martin Mount or MLA, and she's asking counsel for a letter to support us and asking for funding for a position to carry out these duties.
Thank you very much, um Counselor Keller. Any questions from council? Counselor Demota.
Not uh a question, just hearing my full support.
Counselor Keller, would you like to make that motion?
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion, motion that uh committee um ask Mayor Ireland to write a letter on our behalf to Martin Long, asking for financial support for this program.
Mayor Ireland.
Might I suggest a friendly amendment just to write a letter of support rather than say to whom it's addressed?
Absolutely, thank you.
There is a motion on the floor, all in favor? And that is carried. We are at eight. We have come to eleven AM. I'm gonna call a recess for ten minutes. We will reconvene at eleven ten. Welcome back to our committee meeting. Moving on to agenda item seven, new business. Seven point one, an early learning child strategy. Lisa Daniel from Child Services Manager with us today. Pass it over to you.
Thank you. Um good morning, everyone. Uh I want to thank Karen Edwards for her informative presentation regarding the ELCC strategy research. Uh she was not originally assigned to this project, and she and her team have been incredible collaborators pulling all the pieces together to finalize this amazing report. So I just wanted to give a little shout out to her. Uh so the context and considerations for creating a Jasper ELCC strategy document is thorough and detailed, so I won't go into too much more detail about the report. So I won't go into too much more detail about the report. As noted in the RFD in front of you, we are here to discuss what we believe we can action now. So looking at the recommendations, number one, that committee received the attached report, context and considerations for creating a Jasper early learning and childcare strategy for information. And number two, that committee directed administration to conduct a needs assessment of families in Jasper to assess possible changes to service levels at Wildflowers Childcare. And alternatively, that committee directed administration to action other recommendations listed in the attached ELCC report. The strengths of the current municipal childcare programs were highlighted in the report, and lots of wonderful things were mentioned about Wildflowers Childcare, the educators that work in our programs, and the overall asset the childcare program is to our community. The recommendations did demonstrate there are areas where our current service levels could expand to meet the desired future state. Flexibility and accessibility were two areas where families suggested changes in our current service delivery model. We believe that a needs assessment of families would allow us to see where exactly families would like care over and above our current operations. This can mean opening earlier, closing later, or offering care in the evening or on weekends. The report before us did not give any specifics on each of these options, and serving families in our community will give us a better idea of what exactly is needed and when. So that's all I have for you today, but if you have any questions for us.
Thank you, Ms. Daniel. Council Waxer?
I wanted to say that I'm proud of our community in that there is a really strong recognition that of the value and importance of early childhood. And I also wanted to say that I think that this is not something that the municipality of Jasper can resolve or solve on its own. That I think there certainly has been significant movement in the last ten years toward a greater understanding of the importance of early childhood. And I guess I wanted to go on record that my my hope or wish is that eventually that we see that that early learning and care is elevated to the same state as kindergarten to grade twelve education, that it's very clear from research that early learning, the first five years of life are critical to the well-being of any child and that it it's scary to me to think that there are waitlists for children to be actively involved in these programs. And we would never accept that for children kindergarten to grade twelve. And I would put forth that I think it's completely important, zero to five. So I wanted to just say that I'm proud of our leadership and that it isn't it isn't something that Jasper can solve on its own. It's critical. The federal and provincial governments buy into that as well. That we acknowledge early childhood educators as professionals as much as teachers and that that we pay them at the same level and that we provide the service for all children and not not shift the burden in those first five years to to parents. And that's all I had to say for now.
Thank you, Council Waxer. I also found it interesting that a year of childcare could cost as much as a year of post-secondary education. So interesting. Note, any comments from council? Council Devota?
Just because I alluded to it earlier, just as far as attracting qualified people and retaining them here in the community, as far as the availability for housing goes, I just, I wanted to maybe enhance the conversation a little bit around that and maybe through you. Deputy Mayor to administration, I had a little bit of a gap there. On some of the challenges that you're facing and some of something that we could maybe look towards as far as what we need in the community, to particular in this portfolio.
Deputy Mayor Hall for Council Devota, I think we'll certainly refer that to Ms. Daniel about what she's seeing with her staff in childcare. I'll just also reference that council recently passed the municipal employee housing policy, which directs the municipality to try to seek to get maximum use of our existing inventory. We do currently rent one property from a private landowner, which comes with its own unique set of challenges. And there is an unfunded item in the council budget for conversion of one half of the duplex to see if there's an opportunity to create additional space that we're creating a secondary suite that would sort of demise that space rather than one large family unit to be able to have space that might be more appropriate for the types of employees that we see in our season employment. So those are some other considerations that are there. But Lisa can probably speak to what she's actually seeing and some of the challenges that she sees with daycare staff and how municipal employee housing impacts daycare operations.
I would say that this has been the most challenging year for staffing in my eleven years in this position. I would say partially due to housing, but partially just due to lack of availability of qualified individuals. We just had, I interviewed, I think, six people. We hired three. Thankfully, none of them have needed housing. One currently lived here and one already had housing available and then someone found a room in another house. But it it definitely has been a challenge finding staff and then having available housing for them.
I guess to expand on that, like, once you attract somebody that has the the minimum qualifications to enter, there's all the accreditation steps that you have to go through to to become an early learning instructor, teacher, care worker, and that comes with its share of costs as well. From your experience, how long do people tend to stay in those positions once trained?
In in a typical year, usually a long time. So we do have a lot of seasoned veterans. But we do have a lot of transient staff in the last couple of years. I would say more so than I've seen again in my time in this position. Usually to get your level one, you can do that pretty quickly. To get your level two, it's about eight months of coursework. And so then probably a year for some people. And then another year if you want to get your level three. So if you do want to go up to the highest EC level, then you would be looking at at least two to three years in the profession to get here. And that's the quickest. Some people take over ten years to get it done or do it part-time and and take a little bit longer. I would say in the last two years, we've had the most turnover. So and I'm sure I'm not alone in that. The service industry has definitely seen that as well.
Yeah, thank you very much. I appreciate, I'm asking some tough questions there and you're answering really well. And the the way I'm approaching this is not, I'm not saying that municipal housing is gonna fix everything because you don't, we're not gonna keep people in those positions and and hopefully have some area to attract people so that they can, you know, settle into the community and find places to live. So, you know, I think we have a really good program to to help enhance positions. And I think that's just one necessary step that we have to keep our focus on. And I'm glad Mr. Gibbon gave us that update again as a refresher that we're working. Thank you.
Council Waxer?
Through you, Deputy Mayor Hall to Ms. Daniel. Have you, could you tell us some of your thoughts around the possibility of childcare being offered in some of the larger workplaces as suggested in the report?
Deputy Mayor through to Council Waxer. I would say there's definitely businesses in the community who could do it. And some who've who've made it clear they're interested. There is a new grant proposal that's available to employers who are in larger corporations. It's through community and social services, the that portfolio. And it is a funding to offer childcare, partnering with a childcare program to offer childcare at a business. So I think now, if any, would be the time in our community that that might be a viable option.
Rather than that, would you see that impacting the time required impacting Wildflowers in terms of, let's say, your time to assist those those organizations to for set up? Do you see it having an impact of some sort?
Deputy Mayor Hall to Council Waxer. I definitely see if if it was our childcare program who is helping that organization, yes, it would definitely take a lot of time to start up a program, train staff, you know, buy furniture even. It's not easy to get things nowadays as it was once. So, you know, small toilets aren't necessarily as readily available as they used to be. You know, it would it would take time for sure and considerable amount of, say, my time or somebody at the program's time, for sure.
Council Melnick?
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Hall through you to Ms. Daniels. I kind of following along the same lines. It's the last question about other workplaces. And I was surprised to read on page sixty-eight of our package about the area under more formal collaboration. Says there's no longer an agreement between the school and municipality for use of space. And that's a collaboration that has to be revisited. I don't know if this is a dated document and that's been renegotiated. Or are we actively working with the school systems to try to get additional space that could be used for daycare and childcare?
Deputy Mayor through to Council Melnick. Currently, we do not have a joint use agreement with the school board. We are looking at negotiating with them again. That is one of the items that is on the list of things to discuss with them.
And through you, Deputy Mayor Hall, that would be part of the, one of the two recommendations besides your flexibility and looking at additional hours or maybe additional days, but also that's all part of what you're recommending that council approve in in the two points and in the request for decision.
Deputy Mayor Hall through to Council Melnick. Do you mean as part of the survey, we would ask for alternate options for care? Or I think what we're looking to survey is specifically Wildflowers service delivery. Or do you mean like a satellite option?
I'm thinking about it through you, Deputy Mayor Hall. Ms. Daniels, I think about it as a satellite option. So that's not part of what's currently being recommended for council to look at. It could be something that council could revisit down the road.
Deputy Mayor Hall through to Council Melnick. Yes, definitely.
Councilor Keller.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Hall, through you to Ms. Daniels. Are you working in collaboration with the French School? I think they open the daycare and does that help them?
Deputy Mayor Hall through to Council Keller. So the Franklin School and the elementary school both have their own preschool programs. And then Franklin School does operate a daycare for three to five-year-olds in the afternoon. So I would say definitely those two programs have helped with the need for care for three to five-year-olds. They do not take children under three, which is where we're seeing our largest waitlist and our largest need at Wildflowers. Thank you, Ms. Daniels. You're welcome.
Mayor Ireland?
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Hall through you to Ms. Daniels. I appreciate it's not your report. It's somebody else's report that's before us. But are you able to tell me what the designation RW means? So there are comments attributed to RW, but in the legend, there is no RW. I struggle to figure out who's commenting.
That would, oh, Council, sorry, Deputy Mayor Hall through to Mayor Ireland. That would be Roots and Wings, the play school at the elementary school.
Thank you for that. With that detail out of the way. I'm interested in the totality of the recommendation and particularly what our next step ought to be. And I am concerned, to use the colloquialism, putting the cart before the horse. So of the entire document that is before us, I think I was most struck by the concluding words of the authors, of the the university group that that prepared the report. And they emphasize rate in the concluding sentence of the report that any discussion should at a minimum focus on defining priorities and goals for childcare in Jasper. And so if, assuming we accept the report for information, is the logical next step to do a needs assessment or is it to focus on defining priorities and goals and then fit the needs assessment into the larger scale priority document of councils? My my fear is this, that if we go out and ask or perform a needs assessment, I think there is an implication that we will address those needs or that we will make every effort to address those needs. I would be inclined to set the framework first. And it, I mean, it's such a challenging field. The presenters indicated that there are five elements that overlap: accessibility, affordability, flexibility, inclusivity, and quality. But they don't always work in unison. To augment one, quality, for example, might have negative impacts on affordability and accessibility. So it seems to me that council should grapple with the overall strategy, figure out where we want to go, and then within that context, perhaps, do a needs assessment. The need seems to be to be at least generally clear from the work that's been done. A lot of the flexibility arguments come from the business community. They can't get staff to work when they need them. Well, that is a challenge. I recognize that in in our tourism economy. But should we not have a strategy that sorts out whose role it is and what might be the role of business to accommodate that? So that when we do a needs assessment, we can then direct those needs to to appropriate people. So I'm just trying to make sure that as we proceed, we proceed in a logical sequential manner that lets us answer the questions in, I think, priority order, which is let's set the strategy first and then perhaps look at the at the more detailed needs assessment. So a long introduction, but if you could, if you could address that concern that I have about what is the appropriate next step, I would really appreciate that.
Deputy Mayor Hall through to Mayor Ireland. I think that's a great idea. I think that we chose out of the recommendations something that we could do now to show that we are listening to the voice of the community. But I think the municipality setting the framework and what they believe is important as far as early learning and childcare is definitely a first step.
Thank you, Mayor Ireland. I have a question. Council Waxer, I sat in her hotel room last November as Prime Minister Trudeau and Deputy Prime Minister Freeland signed the agreement with Premier Kenny at the time, and we were very, very excited. How has it, are you, are families seeing some of that yet? I'm still really confused on, I know this was asked earlier, but how has this taken funding from lower-income families? Like, did the province cut stuff off because the federal program came into play or like, why? How, I know Mayor Ireland asked this. I wasn't super How, I know Mayor Ireland asked this, I wasn't super clear with the answer, but how, like exactly how does it how are low income families not getting this the support they need?
Um Deputy Mayor Hall, it's um it's a little confusing, so I'll do my best to explain it. So when the agreement was implemented in Alberta, Alberta got to choose how they spend those dollars as far as the stipulations from the federal government. So in Alberta, they did a grant, so a contribution grant that lowers the fees for parents. So that was across the board, non, it doesn't matter what your income is, if you're in a licensed early learning and childcare facility, um it's this amount for children under nineteen months, it's this amount for three to uh four year olds and then four to five year olds, there's a set amount for those and it's not income based, it's just if you're in a licensed facility. So the other thing that the province of Alberta did was change the amount of childcare subsidy. So before uh lower income families were getting a certain amount of childcare subsidy. So if you made under a household income of say ninety thousand, you got five hundred and sixty-four dollars a month towards your childcare bill. When the new grant came in, because they were giving the contribution grant to everybody, they um made the subsidy top up lower, so the top amount you can get for subsidy now for children in an early learning program is two hundred and sixty-six dollars. And that amount is available to people with a household income of up to a hundred and twenty thousand dollars. And then they actually increased the income threshold to a hundred and seventy to get a portion of that. So anyone making a household income of up to a hundred and seventy thousand can get a portion of that subsidy. And someone with a household income of a hundred and twenty thousand or lower gets two sixty-six, whether you make a household income of fifty thousand or a hundred and twenty thousand. So that's where the problem lies.
That that makes it very clear, thank you, thank you. Any other questions or comments from council? Any question? Yeah, I I that makes it, I get it now, thank you. Councilor Wexler, did you get your head up?
I'm working on a on a motion. The committee direct administration to work with community stakeholders to develop an early learning and childcare strategy, or early learning and childcare framework? For Jasper. Uh I'm happy to accept edits.
Do you get it?
Um Deputy Mayor Hall for from Councilor Wexler, I think maybe the word strategy is, I think if I'm understanding the conversation, council's looking for recommendations on forward actions, which I think is what would come out of a strategy, and a strategy would say, okay, we know a bit more about what our community uh current situation is, we have some recommendations of what a future state should look like, and now we need the action plan or strategy is going to help get us from where we are to where we want to be. So I think that that's a little bit different than than a framework, which sort of describes how the system works in the community today. Um so my suggestion would be, uh if you're looking for that sort of um output that gives you recommendations on on actual steps, uh I think that's probably a strategy.
Thank you, Cal, Council Wexler, go ahead.
Okay, so the committee direct administration to work with community stakeholders to develop and early learning and childcare strategy for Jasper would be, is that correct? Yeah, that.
Is there any debate of motion, Mayor Ireland?
Just to be abundantly clear, I wonder whether you might consider adding the word um directing administration to develop a draft strategy and return to a future community goal.
I'll accept that for a minute.
Is there any debate on the motion? It's been motioning clear.
I think that's a little out of order and that probably should have started with the uh the committee uh accept the attached report as well.
Councilor Demona?
I make that motion, if that motion isn't on the table yet. Is it? Are you still crafting it? Okay, all right.
Okay, oh, okay, so we can start with Council Wexler's motion and then Council Demona can make a motion to receive the report information. That, that works, okay. The first motion on the table, Council Wexler's motion. Uh all in favor? Okay, that motion has carried, and Council Demona, you wanted to make the next motion?
Yes, I move that committee accept the early learning and childhood strategy document as information.
Thank you very much, all in favor? And that is also carried. That's everything, isn't it, we've done, okay, great, thank you, Mayor Ireland.
Thank you, no, it's it's late, but thank you Deputy Mayor Hall. Did you say accept?
Or did you say?
Receive, I said receive.
Yeah, and this, thank you.
My receptions uh you know, look like receiving, I played a lot of football as a kid, so.
Thank you very much, Ms. Daniels, for your reports from the committee council today. New business item seven point two, committee conversations annual report. Riddell is in the building, this is Riddell.
Hello, good morning, Deputy Mayor Hall and all council. Um I'm here today to share the community conversations annual report. You've got the report in front of you, and and I won't kind of read it word for word, but September twenty-one, uh twenty twenty-one, community conversations policy was adopted. And so we began into the first year of implementing that policy in twenty twenty-two. Um in totality, uh community development posted sixty-one community conversations in twenty twenty-two. There were two that were canceled in September due to the Chedman wildfire. Um and a total of ninety-seven individuals from our community attended the conversation, at least one conversation. We saw a whole bunch of new members join between September and November, there were sixteen new people, was hopeful. Um and of the ninety-seven total participants, sixty-five were non municipal and thirty-four were members of the municipality's administration team. So the chart you see on the bottom there kind of breaks down the attendance and it is broken down by municipal and non municipal attendance, because that's been something we've all been interested in looking at throughout the year. Um something worth noting is that you can see from quarter to quarter, there has been just a slight decline in attendance from the beginning of the year, January to March, through to like the last three months that we measured September, November. That was kind of seen across the board in every conversation. Um the format of the conversations was a little different in each quarter, so January to March was taking place on Zoom. And what we did hear from participants is that just made it easier for people to attend. Um April to June, there was a mix, April was on Zoom and then May, June were in person only. And participants were kind of citing that Zoom makes it easier to attend. In person, you have more kind of rich dialogue or interesting conversation, so kind of pros and cons to both. And then September to November, we tried a hybrid model, so we were offering that mix, then person and and on Zoom. Um so page two of the RFD kind of goes into how community development has taken action on several things that were raised throughout twenty twenty-two. And more specifics on that are in the uh appendix, which is the report. Um so under successful to date, you can see like some of the action that community development has taken. Definitely something worth noting is that not all action taken by other groups has been summarized in here, there's just a lot and kind of figured for municipal uh um for council's consideration, we we would focus more on kind of what community development and the municipality has done. The further opportunities for consideration are things that are outside of existing municipal scope, authority and budget. And there's a couple um unanticipated outcomes of community conversations that we have noted. Um it seems to have promoted a lot of cross departmental collaboration within the municipality and some increased interaction between council, municipal staff and members of the public, just on subjects of mutual interest. The annual report is attached, um and I'm here to answer any questions you might have, thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Riddell. Any other questions or comments from council? Councilor Wexler?
I just wanted to highlight one uh success from the uh in the conversations, and that would be the uh uh the establishment of a school bus that takes uh the children from Jasper Park Lodge in into the schools. I know that the fact it was written into notes and distributed widely as a as a community concern, I think enhanced the sense of urgency um for that, and I I think that's, that should be really noted as a as a notable success.
Thank you, Councilor Wexler. Any other comments from council? Councilor Melnick?
Thank you Deputy Mayor Hall through you to uh Ms. Riddell. Um thank you very much for the report and the breakdown of the um hour progressed through the year. Um I um appreciate that it was not an overly long report um and it was quite concise, so that's uh makes looking at at the community conversations a lot easier than trying to go through all of the specific details. Um if there, if there's no other conversations or or comments, um if appropriate, I'd be ready to make a motion.
Absolutely, he can make that motion.
I move that, or I'd like to recommend that committee receive the community community conversations annual report for twenty twenty-two for information.
Thank you, Councilor Melnick, any debate on the motion? I will call the question. All in favor? And that is carried. Thank you very much, Ms. Riddell, I think you're gonna stay right there for the next item on our agenda. The community conversations policy review, agenda item seven point three. Might be a tag team between chapter lead and Mrs. Riddell.
Thank you Deputy Mayor Hall, um so the report you have in front of you is uh the administration's review of policy eight zero zero five. Um so September twenty twenty-one, the community conversations policy was adopted. October twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-two, um there was a motion to direct administration to perform a review of policy eight zero zero five um after the completion of the first year of implementation. So community development set out to survey participants and we did two surveys throughout the year, once in June and another in December. Uh we looked at the format, the frequency, the time of day. We asked participants what they thought of the reporting system, just kind of what their what their experience with the program in year one. Collected twenty surveys in June and nineteen in December, and the feedback really helped to inform the policy review. So I just want to point out a quick error on my part, I apologize, that in the discussion section of the RFD, there's numbered items that have been suggested revisions in the policy, and I just flipped around number two and number three. So if you look at number two, it's actually number three in the policy. If you look at number three, it's actually number two in the policy, so my apologies for that oversight, but um essentially administration is proposing seven um proposed revisions to the policy that in our experience, paired with the engagement from the participants, feel will fine tune the policy to meet the needs of those that are engaging with the um community conversation. If anyone has any questions, I'm happy to answer, um yeah, thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Riddell, Councilor Wexler?
I just wanted to speak to the removal of the recreation community conversation, I think that was uh, that I think that makes a lot of sense. Um and that uh you may get much more um rich information, but when at the life stage um that you may um around recreational uh gaps in service or uh successes that could be built on, um then then, and I think judging by the attendance at the uh at the recreational conversations, I think it it only makes sense. But at the same time, I'd like to acknowledge that that would leave me as the only councillor without a community conversation to formally attend.
Mayor Ireland?
Thank you Deputy Mayor Hall. I have a proposal to solve Councilor Wexler's dilemma. It occurred to me that particularly if we are inclined to drop recreation as a community conversation, what is missing, I think, is um an area of focus on what I might sort of generally call um economic prosperity. We have no conversation which engages the interplay of commerce and residence. And I think we would be well served by doing that, so we heard, for example, earlier today, um that the interplay between childcare and business, uh it's it's critical in this community. Um I think we still have work to do to engage more community members. But if we had an area of focus, and now we're missing one, and Council Wexler was complaining, I think, without having enough committees, so if if we if we choose, we could add, I think, um a critical component to the well-being of our community, which is that economics, which is currently under represented.
Councilor Wexler?
I think to a large degree that also speaks to what uh uh Mr. Jackson uh from Tourism Jasper also spoke to this one.
Councilor Demona? I was not, but you're looking at me.
I have a comment to make on another um conversation, this one's specific, so I'll leave.
Any comments from council regarding? We'll invite Councilor Demona to speak.
Well, just on the um speaking specifically to the adult one, because it was uh I was just newly appointed and we had our, the meeting is on the the first Wednesday of the month, and I was very excited about coming back, but it doesn't happen until January because we've blocked out December, and uh you know, I guess, because a lot of, there's a, there's a few near the end of the month, so I think the the strategy was not to have any in December, but uh because that one's so early, I I don't think it should be treated differently than the other ones, but I think that there could be some changes made down the road if you if we wanted to contemplate that. Maybe, you know, if it's if it falls in the first or second week, um then you know, there might be the ability to have that meeting, and I think there's a lot of participation in that one, I was really impressed by the amount of people that were there and and people that were signed in and uh being the Zoom link. So I'm not saying that that's something we should do, I just think that there might be an opportunity for more engagement that way, maybe this is Riddell, doesn't agree with, I don't know, just from my perspective, I I really enjoyed what uh what that conversation brought to the table and happy to be part of it.
Thank you, Councilor Demona. Mayor Ireland?
Thank you Deputy Mayor Hall, through you to Ms. Riddell, I had one other thought about this, and I'm really pleased to have an opportunity to pause and review this policy after a year of operation. What I think Might be missing, and it's important for the community and our residents to understand. Is a definition of the role of council. The the purpose um describes that um by adopting this policy, we will establish role clarity for council. We establish role clarity for counselors and for administration and for participants. But nowhere do we actually address the role of council. And it might be fairly simply stated, and it might be. More or less obvious, but I think residents are entitled to know. How their views through community conversations. Are carried forward and what the role of council is, and it's not described. So we will receive reports. Um but then what? Um and it to me, that has been one of the challenges of this transition to. Community conversations. So we've replaced a committee structure where we used to get recommendations and our role was was. I think more clear. In this one, we haven't really described the role of council as council. Um and I just wonder whether that might be something that we could add so that people know. Um the the chain and where they're entering in that chain when they come to a community conversation, what their expectations should legitimately be.
Thank you, Mayor Ireland. Ms. Dell, secure.
Uh thank you, Deputy Mayor Hall, through to Mayor Ireland. It's a great question. And um I feel like uh anything we can do to really clarify that would probably be of benefit. Um and just make sure that the public and participants understand super clearly exactly what they're entering into. So the section on role, what I'm hearing from you is we could elaborate potentially a little bit more. Um right now, it talks about, you know, counselors, what they're expected to do, share information. They don't have to report back to council on what they heard, but they may if they go choose. Am I correct in understanding that you're thinking that there could be some clarity added there? That council could, if they wish, take action on some of the items, uh for example, in reports that are uh further opportunities? Like, would you like to maybe need to flesh that out a bit more?
I believe so. I mean. Again, it it may seem um so obvious that it's not worth stating, and yet. So a counselor reports, may or may not report, how does anything get from a community conversation to the council table? What expectation is there that council um will ever have to address? Something that has been discussed, because we're out of this realm of. Direct recommendations. We we get reports, this was discussed, but there is not a formal recommendation. So council, even if it does hear from counselors, I report. Um does anybody have an obligation to make a motion arising from that? I it just. There's just a lack of of specificity from my perspective about what we're supposed to do with anything.
CEO Given?
Uh Director Reed, and I probably we'll we'll see how much of the same content we end up having here. Uh your worship, I think a a couple of different things. Uh the policy statement itself addresses this at least in part. Um the final paragraph in the policy statement says, as an addition to other communication channels and processes, so it acknowledges upfront. The community conversations is in addition to other uh processes that are available to facilitate dialogue and information flow between residents and and councils. So it does acknowledge that this is not the only way for residents to get information to council. It is a way uh for things to come to council's attention. I appreciate that it doesn't sort of specify what will council do with things that they hear from community conversations. Um certainly, uh the information flow section of the policy, which is on page two of three. Does describe how information will come from community conversations to council. But it does not obligate council to do anything about about that information. And so I think that that's a fair discussion. Uh you know, we could include a line there that says. So what? So so this is how information will get from community conversations to council. And council can decide whether you want to obligate yourself to do anything with that. Or whether you want to just acknowledge that it is actually up to individual council members. To uh or council as a collective to identify themes or items that they would wish to discuss at the council table or in some other forum. Uh you know, the the reports from community conversations can either be used. Specifically on individual items, where council might say, well, I want to follow up on that specific thing. Or they could be used by council uh to identify trends over time, so that as you do your strategic planning. Uh or other sort of larger scope documents, you can try to incorporate some of the concerns or ideas or themes that you've been seeing. In community conversations over an extended period. So um those are two fairly different things. And council might want to preserve the the optionality to sort of approach either way. Um I think we could maybe describe that in a in a sort of a sentence that says. Council's under no obligation to directly follow up, or individual council members, or council may choose. Uh to direct administration to follow up on items that are presented in community conversations reports. Period. And you may choose to, you may choose not to. Uh but at least that would make it clear to the community that there is not a direct. Recommendation sort of uh venue where council obligated to act. Director Reed, how how close were we?
Uh I think excellent. Uh I'll give you a nine out of ten, sir. Uh I would only ask for more information uh through through you, Deputy Mayor Hall, to to your worship. Uh the responsibility section at the end, the last four bullets are council's bullets. I agree that there, I don't think the clarity you're asking for is in those bullets. Um but that is actually where the role of council lives. It's your responsibilities. Um I would certainly agree with CEO Given that we could clearly put under roles the role of council. We could also, if if it would please council, include the role of staff, and I think back to the number of times where we have said. Where we can do it, we do, and that's within existing scope, budget and authority. And so we could clearly explicitly write that in as well. Um and I wonder of those four bullets, uh Mr. Mayor. Uh the clarity that CEO Given, if we were to have a fifth bullet that simply simply indicated, or would you like to see it in the roles section? And would you like to see uh the staff statement as well?
Um thank you, Director Reed, and Mr. Given. Having directed me to that third page, and I was looking for. For roles in the role section, but that's that's fair. I think the third one is where I struggle. Because recommendations are not coming from community conversations participants in the directions. It and and so what do we? What is the expectation? We receive reports, fine. Um one of the challenges I have found with this transition is. Lack of filters. So something gets discussed um and it comes almost raw to to council. Um and how do we vet that information? How do we filter it? There there are no filters in the process, which I find. Extremely difficult and challenging to deal with. And so. What is council's role? Is is council then to apply the filter? If that is the case, and I think participants should know that going in, that yeah, you can. You can present what you like at a community conversation. Um at the end of the day, this is going to get sifted through by somebody. If that somebody has to be counsel, that's fine. But I would like some clarity so that council is comfortable when it has to exercise that rule of. Of being the filter, that it knows that that's what's expected of it, and so do participants when they are invited to engage. Because otherwise, I I just find that it's 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 a bit of a fire hose right now. We get all sorts of information. Um but it's all unfiltered, and I find that to be really challenging.
Counselor Devota?
Well, I I think for me, I feel the opposite, and I feel bad for saying that in the sense that I think since we've engaged on this. Uh for engaged in this process, I found I found that um administration. Has really picked up on commonalities that come through uh important topics that keep reoccurring. And they either come through us in in some form of recommendation or as a budgetary thing, this is what we've been hearing from the community. Uh and make presentations that way through recommendations. And um although I can't speak to anything specifically, I think that kind of. Loose format helps us bring things that came up in our conversations to the table and. And then if other counselors pick up on similarities on things that they've heard or think that's important and bring back to their conversation table, I think it. It's it's a pretty fluid process. And uh you know, it's 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 not very rigid by any means. I I think. I'm putting. More filters on it might um work against the the process. So I feel that right now that it it provides a a little bit more of a. Information flow to council, and people feel a little bit more comfortable in the way they're doing it. Thank you.
CEO Given?
Uh thanks very much, Deputy Mayor Hall. I think I think the real essential question um to me at least seems to be. Around the the core purpose of community conversations. Is it there to provide this specific advice to the municipality? And if that's the case, then uh I think your worship, your your question becomes really relevant is who's filtering that advice? And and who's bringing those items to the table? I think my understanding previously was that community conversations is actually not. Just about providing specific advice to the municipality. It's also the municipality convening a place and a space. For the community to discuss community issues together. And choose what they might wish to follow up on individually or as organizations independent of municipality. So it's the municipality acting as a convener. And the convener, and I think the approach we have right now is the convener. Reporting to its governing body on what's being discussed. Uh and things that are happening as a result of that convening activity, you know, bringing people together, and here's what happened, here's what they talked about, and here's what happened out of that. And then council as a as a agent in that system has the ability to say, well, we also want to talk about something. Specifically that that was talked about there. Um which is a bit, it it's there's some nuance there that leads to some ambiguity. Agreed. Um but I think that that ambiguity is an intentional part of the approach. Rather than creating a thing where we charge the community conversations to give specific advice to the municipality and limit their scope to giving advice to the municipality. Um both are possible, but I think that 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 gray area is as a result of. An intentional effort for the municipality to convene a place for you to to discuss community issues. That may or may not directly impact municipal operations.
Thank you, CEO Given. I I do agree. I like. It's an informal casual setting where it doesn't feel, I've had community members say to me, oh, I I have an issue with this, and I'll say, oh, write a write a letter. Well, I. I can't write a letter. It's it because it feels so formal and so foreign to somebody that doesn't sit at this table, but I I I. Like the casualness of it, because it it definitely does um create a lot of just very lots of conversation. But um Counselor Devota, do you have any hand up?
Yeah, I I just wanted to to follow up on that, and I appreciate the information. Again, I wish I was as well spoken as Mr. Given, and that's essentially. And what I was getting at. And then also, you know, we talked about uh information flow. It also provides uh community members to get. Information on what council's doing and, you know, our the reason why things have been in place. There's new members to the community. There. Might be people that are coming to the first time and not understand how processes work, and and I find that, you know, information flow has gone back that way when. Oh, this is what we've been doing, or um you know, in council strategic plan, the reason why this process is taking place is because. Uh you know, collectively, we saw this as a cabinet, et cetera, et cetera. So I think that. It's not structured the same way as a committee or a board, uh you know, assignment might be, but I think that it's been a really healthy. Process for council. So I don't know if if attaching more uh more regimented regimented process would. Kind of confined information. Not sure.
Mr. Dell?
Apologies, I wasn't sure if I could speak to this, but um and I can only represent my own perspective, but. Um what I have seen in community conversations is um. I have seen some, I guess maybe there are less formal filters type of things applied. So when something comes up, I. Watch the group around the table say, hey, we don't, are we kind of getting this? Maybe we should do a survey and find out a bit more. So I saw that happen a few years ago when we were talking about the daycare waiver. The community conversation participants put together a survey and we gathered more information. Before we could kind of feel like people could feel like they could talk about it more. Another layer I see is um administration, so ourselves and community development saying, oh, we should find out a bit more about this. So when it came up to transportation was coming up a lot, we're like, but it's hard in our heads to quantify like what, who actually needs this? Like, it's it's really just people guessing. So we put together a transportation survey, and I think to your point, Mayor or Deputy Mayor Hall. That went out, and it did spark some conversation among stakeholders about just how many families might need. Transportation into the town sites. That's kind of another way that administration might collect a bit more information. Um and then finally to to CEO Given's point, the way. I was in, I was happy to see the responses from participants when it came to the format for information flow to council. Were some of the highest. So ninety seven percent, I think, people were very happy with that process. How information is getting to council. They were more happy with that than they were about the time of day or the frequency or. Like, so that was the piece that people seemed to be happy with, and they seemed to be getting. And I'm I really, my own experience, see it as part of my role to explain the process to participants. And what I what I do say to people is, this is a forum to discuss what we're all seeing and to share perspectives. We're going to share what we've seen with municipal council, just like anyone around that table could share with their board or with their organization. Municipal council then had so many things in front of them, but they can choose to say, hey, we want to know a bit more about this, and then they could direct administration. To do more looking into that one item. People seem to really get that and um. Understand that that is the way it goes, and if they have an idea, it's not just immediately done, included in a pretty comprehensive report. So. Yeah, thank you.
Thank you for that. Are there any other comments or questions from counselors? Please have, Counselor Waxer?
I'm just going to say, it 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 also allows people to discuss ideas of what they're seeing. In an informal way and where they might not ever write a letter to council or or to or to any other organization, but they. They're wondering or thinking about and or excited about, and I think it just gives us a better, it gives us a uh. More information about what people in the community are thinking about and worried about or excited about.
Thank you, Counselor Waxer. Counselor Melnick?
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Hall, and I think through you to um uh administration. Um to pick up on the mayor's point, we received a variety of points of comments. But they come to us without, as as the mayor mentioned, a filter or a priority or. Um what is the most important of, say, ten points that were discussed at a con- conversation? Maybe in the community conversation as a wrap up of that particular conversation or those conversations. What would you like to see presented to council as the most urgent? And that way, we're not chasing fifteen different ideas. But we're getting the consensus of the group that talked about the idea of what the five ideas. Or three ideas are most important to that group at that time. And I'm hoping that might help to address. The filter um conversation, because we can't pursue everything. But we certainly should be pursuing things that are the most current, relevant, and will have the most impact.
Thank you, Counselor Melnick. Counselor Devota?
I appreciate those comments, and you know what? I I just hope the mayor understands that, that you know, I'm not losing. What you're suggesting. It's just I'm I'm seeing something a little differently, that's all. And you know. I just to ask Counselor Melnick, how is that different than any other committee that we report on, like things that get discussed there? And we come back, I just, for me, I I'm. And we come back, I just, for me, I I'm I'm feeling just to see from what I've experienced and and I could be isolated in in my thoughts here, but I feel like I I still report the same way from my community conversations that way on another committee that I sit on, so. Um you know, sometimes there is things that are mentioned that might not be a huge priority and and like I said before, things that might be consistent over conversations might come through administration and say, you know, this is what we're hearing and maybe Counselor X might have missed on this or whatever, that's never been mentioned, but you know, I I think that those steps just naturally come to council that way.
Counselor Melnick.
Thank you, if I could respond to Counselor Demoda, and I appreciate that, I'm I'm not saying don't include the points. I'm saying prioritize what the what the committee feels are important at the moment and and that way council can concentrate on fewer initiatives. Um without losing them, they did, I didn't say to take them out of the report. But somehow give us a a ranking of what the tone of the conversation was and um again, that might not be a, it might add extra time to the conversations. But it may be um maybe important to know that, you know, um the ideas are being heard. But as a group, commute the the conversation about X is saying, this is what we should be looking at.
Go ahead, Counselor Dill.
All right, just to again, I just, I I find that that has that different than what we do in in committee meetings like. I I appreciate the debate, but I, go ahead.
See you again.
But Deputy Mayor Hall, I just was going to offer one thing in terms of maybe maybe it's a nuance, maybe it's not relevant, but we should be careful about calling community conversations committees. Because they are not actually committees, they are a forum. Uh because and the reason I say that they're not committees is they're not the same people. Uh they don't have any delegated authority or decision making power. Um and so they are, they're maybe better thought of as a venue. Uh or a platform than a, and just make that distinction, I think I think that nuance sort of gets this again, the central point, the municipality is acting as a convenor. Providing a time and space for people to get together. But not really taking responsibility, you know, by design for for acting on anything that comes to that, which is slightly different from a committee where you have a defined group with a defined purpose, often a defined membership. And then there's a need or an obligation to say, okay, well, so we've defined this group and a purpose, and so how are we gonna ask that, you know, how are we gonna act on the things with that group, just a bit of a nuance there, uh because if we were asking, uh if we knew who was going to be attending and what their specific purpose was. It might be easier for that group, you know, for us to validate us, being the municipality, council and administration, to validate the ranking of priorities that's set by that group, because we've defined the purpose and who they are and how often they're gonna be. With a community conversation, you don't have that same ability, so you might get theoretically in, you know, for the sake of argument, you could get a community conversation where one person attended. Have one topic and that topic comes out as the most important thing that was discussed at the child age community conversation for that term. Well, in terms of validating that, then council and administration have a bit of a challenge because it's come across as the number one priority coming out of uh school age children community conversation, there's only one person. And so um that's that's where the prioritization could be a bit challenging. Um and you know, I think from that admin perspective, allowing council to to decide what adheres as the larger parties. Well, it is a gray area, allows council the most light.
Uh Director Reed, a senior hand up and one, Deputy Mayor Ireland.
Uh thank you, Deputy Mayor Hall, through the council, to add on what Cao Given mentioned, uh a couple of more nuances. One, the report you just received, the previous item does not by any stretch list all of the things that were discussed at community conversations. The word trends is used on purpose, we don't say items. Because we don't bring you every one of them. We already vet the trends based on really what we're seeing in community, not what one person brings to a meeting. And in addition, that report is also vetted through your strategic priorities. So we are putting some preference on, we we might not be perfect, I'll fully admit, we might not be perfect. But we are absolutely applying the lens of your strategic priorities to the the the, well, certainly the actionable items, the ones that we do, the successes to take. We action those again within existing scope, budget and authority. Um which which is informed by your strategic priorities. But this report, the one you just received, the summary of trends noted is exactly a summary of trends, not a listing of items that were brought forward by any number of single individuals. Um and I want to uh make one thing very clear. The example that Cao Given gave about the child child age, uh the uh school age child cohort. I kind of wish he would have picked recreation. Because that cohort always gets lots of attendance, but recreation is the exact conversation that fits this description. And so what you see uh ahead of you or before you is we don't think that conversation is providing value. And that's our recommendation to you is those issues are being talked of in the age group cohorts as trends and discussions and the three month cycle is not one person, one item, one day. Um so I I really, those nuances to me are really important for this policy. I also would really like to go back to I think it's very simple for us to add in roles for both council as a whole and staff. And I think that those would uh assist in clarity, and so administration, myself, would like to make it clear that that we could make that happen.
Mayor Ireland.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Hall. Not sure where to begin, but thank you for that um directory. Just for clarity. I am not proposing whatsoever that we impact the the nature of the community conversation. But I think it is critical that if we are going to engage our community in entering into a conversation, they should understand what the meaning of that is, so let them say whatever they will, but my experience has been that each individual has something they want to discuss. It is not ever put to debate and there is no consensus sought, and that's fair enough, people are there to express their view on a community issue which they choose. And so at at best, I suppose, there is a sense of acquiescence, okay, we've heard your issue, now here's my issue and there's the next person's issue, and around it goes. Everybody has had an opportunity to present. And then it moves forward, where what is the expectation on any resident having gone to a community conversation and said something? Will that necessarily make it to council? Um is is there a huge catch basin and then a straight line pipe? Um to council? Or is there a big catch basin and then a bit of a funnel? And we haven't dealt with that. So fair enough, if council is to be the filter, let's make that abundantly clear so that when we ask people to engage, we do them the courtesy of telling them here's how your engagement will be managed. I mean, to me, it it is a duty that we owe, and at the end of the day, if if we are the filter, that is fine, that that is maybe appropriate, perhaps staff um can can clarify the role of staff in in providing a bit of a funnel. Um consistent with our stated uh strategic priorities or or other elements, um the the issue that we hear, whether it's in scope, in budget, and we have capacity, those sorts of things. But I think we can make this policy better with additional clarity about the role of council and potentially the role of staff, and so I believe in that, I'm prepared to make a a motion overall, but it's not the exactly the recommendation, so I welcome further discussion on the topic first.
Thank you, Mayor Ireland. Counselor Dora.
I appreciate that clarity and and I understand you better now and and what you said. Um you know, one of my questions that I meant to ask this to to Counselor Melnick and and yourself as well. Is there an issue or, you know, I'm I'm happy that we're philosophizing here, if that's a word, that on things that may happen or could happen, but are what we're talking about an issue right now, are those things an issue? So if if things are working well and we're receiving the information and you know, I I don't see anything wrong with the current construct, so that's why I was just really questioning it, I I appreciate the fact that it's nice to have the roles and responsibilities and those types of filters in there and and have the the words attached to them and um I I think where I was going is that I didn't see a major issue of how things were going, because I don't feel that we're getting bombarded with all these little loose things like we should have X colored rocks at the entrance of the library or whatever like that, because like to me, like those types of things don't come up. So that's why I was making that those points, thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Demoda. Any other, no other hands, I think Mayor Ireland might have a motion.
I will take a stab at getting this matter. No, we can't get results, right? I think I have to, I have to make a motion um that committee directs administration to return to a future committee, the whole meeting with amendments to the community conversation policy, which one um better define the role or define with more clarity the role of council and staff? And two, that they include in a revised policy an area of focus regarding the tourism economy.
Thank you for your motion, is there any debate on the motion? Counselor Melnick.
Um just for clarity, we were removing the environment and recreation, pardon me, and we were going to add a new committee and you used a different term than what we heard discussed earlier.
I did, I I think initially I might have proposed economic prosperity. Um and I I'm fine with the term, I think I used tourism economy this time, but I am open to any suggestion about the best use of it.
Well, the the reason I think the title is important is that we related the fir- former title to the two presentations that we had and how it related to interacting with the business community. And I think if we say tourism, we're we're kind of pigeonholing which part of the community can respond, I think the entire business community should be able to respond and feel comfortable and and be able to provide them inform- information and discussion.
If that is a friendly or a suggestion for a friendly amendment to to replace um the area of focus on recreation with an area of focus on economic prosperity. And I accept that friendly amendment, and that is my new motion.
Thank you, Mayor Ireland. Is the motion clear to administration? Counselor Wexler, did you, you have your hand up?
I I'm just wondering, that addresses uh one of the uh changes, but do you need i- in order to move forward in in January, are there uh there's some, there's some other recommendations that maybe didn't get covered?
Uh thanks for that, Deputy Mayor Hall, through your Counselor Wexler. Um my understanding, just for clarity, is that the proposed revision are all good and that the motion is that we add an additional proposed revision that would be defining the role of council and staff more clearly within the policy. And to include revised area focus list to remove recreation and in its place put in that tourism economy.
Counselor Demoda.
I want to vote in favor of having a revision come back. Um I'm not okay with some of the terms that are being suggested, I I want to support some of the changes, but I don't feel that we need more defined roles and I would like to not use like Counselor Melnick said, the the term tourism. Uh because I think that, you know, when I when I started to think about the conversation, well, the the committee, the the Jasper Partnership Committee, there's a lot of different agencies at that table, and I think if we had something that was like that in the community conversation where people from the business community or tourism or or whatever that might be, somebody representing um an activity area or uh transportation provider, people can come there and talk about common goals and things and direct energy towards council, so I in theory, I I will support the motion, but there are aspects of it, like I think if I made a motion of something that I wanted to see um and it didn't get supported by the rest of council, um I'd feel a little disappointed, but at the same time, I just thought I'd voice my opinion, thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Demoda. Any other debate on the motion? Oh, Mayor Ireland.
Just for clarity, I could restate the motion if necessary, but I thought my motion was a direction to revise, but it would necessarily come back for approval, that was your point. And I'm not saying that we're we're approving anything yet, but I would like to see revisions based on those things and then come back here for a debate.
Okay, well, I get, there's still a motion and I spoke to it and I understood that, so I appreciate that, thanks.
Great.
I love to be.
Any other debates? And I'm going to call the question, um all in favor of the motion. And that motion is carried. We are now at twelve thirty P M and I would like to call a lunch break. So one hour we usually do, we come back at one thirty, okay, we're gonna call a lunch recess, we'll reconvene at one thirty P M. Welcome back from lunch, council colleagues, administration. Call meeting back to order at one thirty. And moving on to agenda item seven point four, Director's Report from Finance Administration, oh, I'm looking over at Counselor Melnick for a motion.
Geez, I have similar problems to other counselors. Um we have approached the four hour mark, so I'd like to move uh make a motion that council continues to meet um since we have reached our four hour mark. I can make the motion now.
That's a good idea. Sorry, I guess I'm still uh this people.
I will call the question, all in favor. That is carried. Okay, back to agenda item seven point four, our director's report from Finance Administration, I will turn it over to uh Director Valchuck.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor, good afternoon, council. Um I will go over the whole report, um but I'll just highlight a few um areas and um basically in I T, the biggest things is that um we relocated the email server. Uh this was prompted by the Chedmond wildfire, however, it was on our list to do. So this made us um, you know, um bump it up and make it happen a little bit faster. Um so this is a good case going forward, it's already set up, should we have another um emergency going forward? Um there was some damaged equipment from the lightning strike at the library as well as uh some equipment damaged by the um power issues when the fire um occurred, uh wasn't astronomical amount, um but it it did occur. Um, and I'll highlight a little bit more about the Chedmond wildfire um in my next bit. Um, and one other thing that I T is uh working on diligently is uh. Working with Shaw to install high speed internet at operations out there. Um. Internet is very, very slow and it um it's been a pain for a very long time, so this is going to be a huge change for them. Um, so we're looking forward to that and um. As I said, we're going to talk a little bit more about the disaster um that occurred this um. This fall. Um, I've applied with the disaster recovery program, so the D R P. Um, in hopes to recover costs associated with the Chedmond wildfire municipal power outage. Um, the D R P is administered by the Almer Alberta Emergency Management Agency. And provides funding for incremental response costs and for the repair, rebuild, restoration. Of uninsured public infrastructure and essential services to pre-disaster, pre-disaster functional capability, sorry. Um, so some of those um, uh not so much the equipment damage, it was very small in in hindsight, but. More on the the operational side of um while we were taking care of things during that power outage. So that has been applied for. Um, and just waiting for a response on that. On the side of grants, um the Tourism Relief Grant. Uh, T R F has been applied for um in support of our stage upgrades, upgrades and streetscape study. Um, in attempt to enhance tourism experience and foster economic recovery for Jasper. So in hindsight, it also um. You know, it's a good um follow up based on the presentation that you seen from um Mister Jackson this morning for Tourism Jasper. Um, I know there's always a lot of questions on paid parking, uh so I just thought I would let everyone know that there will be a detailed report coming early in the twenty twenty three year. Um, that will include the financials. We're just waiting for everything to wrap up for the twenty two year before we bring this to council. So that'll be uh reported. Very early in the twenty three year. Um, and you will see myself back at council early also for the twenty three. Utility levy and collection bylaw, so that'll be returning early January. Um, also included is my um is a report uh based on the September thirtieth um dates. And then in the early new year, you'll see the December thirty first date data final numbers. Uh, it usually comes at the same time as when we would um bring the audited. Um, financial statements slightly before, um but right now at the seventy five percent um. Um, at seventy five percent of the year, the revenue equates to seventy, I think it was seventy. Eight percent revenue and then um in expenses, we are at fifty seven percent. So, but that's typical. Um, fifty seven percent, we're usually a couple of months behind with a lot of utility bills, um whatnot. There they tend to come in a little bit later, so. Um, that's also why you don't see everything wrap up until March. April, so um, but we're in good standings there as we um. Uh, at the uh three quarter mark of the year and then also included was a capital expense report. Indicating also where capital items stood at September thirtieth. Um, and also a bit of details on if they're going to be complete, if they're going to be in the carry uh forward uh request that. Is brought forward early in the new year, um as well as uh there was a few items that administration decided that there was that could be removed from. Um, the budget altogether, so um there are some details within that and that is a quick summary of. Uh, the report for finance and administration. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Director Valcheck. Are there any questions or comments from council? Councillor Keller.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Hall, through you to uh this note of anxious tourist scatter. What's that stand?
I am terribly sorry, but I cannot answer that question. I am sorry, Deputy Mayor Truick, councillor Keller, I mean, um. That is a, it is on the utility side that um I would have to make a call into operations. I'm sorry.
I was just curious. Thank you, um councillor Melnick.
I think I've asked that question before and I believe it has to do with the water. Um, uh tracking of the water system where they can see how much fresh water is being produced. Um, I think I asked just about nine months ago and I'm struggling to remember exactly what it is, but. It is definitely to do with the tracking of the uplift clean waters in the system.
Thank you, um C A O Given.
But just uh additionally, uh council scat is a a generic term um and quick. Quick Googling, um it is a control system that is comprised of computers, uh communications equipment. Um, computer interfaces that allow you to oversee machines and processes. So we use SCADA systems. In our water and wastewater treatment systems, but you may be using a SCADA system uh in lots of mechanical processes. Uh, and it stands for supervisory control and data acquisition for those that are really, really interested.
Thank you for that information. Any other questions or comments from council? Mayor Ireland.
Not back from luncheon. Thank you, Deputy Mayor Hall, through you to. Smell and check. Uh, can you tell me? Physically, where is the email server?
Yes, Deputy Mayor, through to your worship. It's um actually in Stony Plain with um Trinus. Their support test um I T system. It was delivered to them uh when the fire occurred.
And so it will remain there for the foreseeable future and would that? And contemplate that? If we are subjected to a wildfire again, we're more likely to be able to maintain email service. Within the organization.
Yes, your worship, uh it should um continue on and um. Unless there's a problem with their area, we will be able to communicate a lot faster than we were able to this time.
Thank you for that. And second question, if I may, um. The high speed internet at operations, so physically at. Our operations building over by the parks compound, is that where that is being installed or elsewhere?
Um, Deputy Mayor, through to your worship, it's um. It's a connection, a shock connection that will speed the, uh there's a server at Ops, but there's also a server. Over here that they connect to and this will in. Speed up that, I'm not great at um. At in the I T world, but it will speed up the the connection to um the servers. And be able to communicate faster. It it's it's definitely working on a speed of um back in the nineties. So it's exciting, it's exciting news for them.
Well, I'm excited for it. Yeah, I am potentially uh way behind you in understanding this stuff, but. Um, I noticed, for example, that just a few minutes ago when you were presenting your report. This acorn turned out this annoying fan. Um, if we had better high speed connection, could operations actually do that remotely? That'd save us all from not hearing much of what happens in this room.
Um, I I believe that it might be a possibility as there are a lot of um building controls that can be operated through the I T world. Um, there's a lot of things that they can do uh remotely through even at the um aquatic fitness center that they can uh monitor. Say temperature letter levels and and um, you know, turn things on and off, so um. It there is a a possibility, especially with movement that um we're seeing right now in the I T world for sure. Might be in the foreseeable foreseeable for the future.
That is exciting. And one final question, if I may, related to. The summary of the operating budget. I am interested only in one line, the legislative and protective services revenue. Which would suggest that with. Twenty five percent of the year remaining. We need still about thirty six percent of the revenue. So is it? Is that within the realm of expectation? Does this? Present as a surprise? It it just seems to be that. I don't know where all that revenue comes from, if it comes from bylaw, for example, it. It seems optimistic to expect that we would get thirty six percent of the revenue in twenty five. Percent of the time, but I don't know where else that revenue comes from and whether whether those figures. Indicates anything that could be alarmed.
Deputy Mayor Hall, through to your worship, um there. There, there is a a tendency for that revenue to be low at this time of year. Um, however, I'd like to dive a little bit more into. Um, the actual figures to be able to give you a more accurate number and where we're lacking. Um, there has some been. There has been um some areas where money hasn't been transferred over to um us as of yet, so that would be one cause. But I could look further into it and give you more detailed information.
Thank you.
Councillor Melnick.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Hall, through you to Ms. Melancher. Um, regarding the disaster recovery program, we're at the tail end of the year. We've already expended that money. And so it would be in this year's budget. Um, if we do get any recoveries, it would be an additional revenue in twenty twenty three. But it wouldn't go into operations. It would go directly back into a reserve or how does that? Any money that we get get handled in a new budget year?
Uh, Deputy Mayor, through to councillor Melnick, um yes, it would be a decision that would be brought to council. Um, we wouldn't be um recognizing it. In the twenty twenty two year, that is for certain. Um, uh, what we might have to uh discuss is where we are going to fund. All the fund that from and if council wishes to fund it from a reserve, then it could be replaced from a reserve. Um, additionally, if we do not get that um funding, then um it would have to be just deducted from our annual um surplus. Um, or become part of a deficit for the year. Um, but yes, it would be something that we would bring to council to discuss and make decisions on.
Thank you for that. I I I just the last part of that, this would probably be determined while we're doing the audit before we. Finalize the votes for the year potentially.
Um, there is a possibility that we would know by then. However, we have followed up twice already and haven't um. Had any news as of yet, so I I do know that it usually takes them a wa- a long time to go through um the initial application. And then there's also um further details to be given to them um to back the funding. However, I've been very diligent at making sure that all of that is um ready to go as soon as I hear back from them.
Great, thank you very much.
Thank you, councillor Melnick. Councillor Devota.
I know sometimes I have an attention span of the donut middle. Um, I just want a question on the carry forward uh from the skate park under grounds there. Um. There's nine hundred and twenty seven, five hundred, and I know that we just finished um budget discussions, but. From my recollection of just that nine twenty seven, that isn't entirely municipally funded, correct?
Um, Deputy Mayor, through to councillor Devota, uh yes, it it there's only a portion that is funded by municipality and that is the three hundred thousand that council had motioned um. In twenty twenty. Two budget um. Conversations and then um I'm sure that. Um, we would be coming back to council to discuss how it moves forward, um because I'm sure things have changed, um given light of the. Economy and whatnot, but um. So far, council has given a motion to um support three hundred thousand of it, yes.
Okay, and I apologize if I'm making you repeat that and.
No, that's that's totally fine and it is in the budget noted as debt and donation.
Right, okay, that's great. I appreciate it. Thank you. Um, I always say that first you don't succeed, try this and try again.
Any other questions or comments from council?
I have a quick question. The stage upgrades that could potentially be supported by this grant, is that the walls I've seen or the hundred eighty thousand dollar? I've seen it before in a budget. I'm just wondering what that what that actually is.
Uh, yes, Deputy um mayor, there's um the walls, there's some um. Also some sound electrical uh components that have to occur um on that as well, so that's all part and parcel of the application that was put in.
Thank you for that. Any other councillors with a commentary question? May I please look for a motion from council to receive this report for information? Councillor Keller. So tell those in favor. The report is received. Okay, moving on to agenda item. Seven point five. Right back to Director Valcheck. We have a reserves policy.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Um. I'm just getting to it. Um, so this is bringing back the reserve policy. Administration is recommending that committee recommend council. Approve the reserve policy on schedule A with the res- reserve descriptions as presented. Um, at the last meeting that uh council uh was presented the reserve descriptions. Um, it was also uh discussed that council would like to go through the uh the budget process. Prior to um approving the new policy and uh that was completed and many conversations were had. Around the reserve policies that we were discussing, so I thought it was a good practice for sure. Um, so today. It is coming back to council um for further discussion and I would like to note as well. That I too had an oversight. Um, it just says Mrs. Fidel had um this morning. I I forgot to include one suggested item and that was by councillor um Melnick to include a description on tangible capital assets. So that has not been forgotten entirely. I remembered it this morning. Um, so to be included in this policy also would be. Um, tangible capital assets are non-financial assets having physical substance. That are one, held for the use in production or supply of goods and services. Uh, for rental to others for administrative purpose or for the development, construction, maintenance or repair of other. Uh, tangible capital a- assets. Uh, two. Have useful economic lives extending beyond an accounting period, so the one year. And are not, uh sorry, and number three are not to be used. Or sorry, are to be used on a continuous basis and number four are not for sale. Um, in the ordinary course of operations. So common examples of tangible capital assets include. Such items such as roads, buildings, vehicles, equipment, land, water and other utility systems. Um, computer hardware, software. Um, and whatnot, so uh that will be included and I apologize for um the oversight on including it for this meeting. For uh schedule A. Uh, just to provide another um highlight, it provides um the overall um purpose of each reserve. It also um will provide the source of funds for each reserve. It will give guidelines for when and how each reserve can be accessed. Recommendations for contributions to each reserve and formulas to determine optimal balances for each reserve. And um council has seen the policy twice now, I believe, and now a third time on the schedule A. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Director Melunchak. Questions or comments from council? Uh, Counselor Demoda.
Well, I just, I'm very impressed at how this has all evolved and uh, the strength behind it. I think um, you know, it, it provides a lot more clarity to council and, and members of the community if they're so interested. But uh, yeah, I, I just, I like the evolution of the organization and I believe it'll continue to improve as we as not we, but you tweet within and uh, develop the standard. So um, I am, this isn't my wheelhouse, unfortunately, but uh, for me, it's becoming more and more um, readable down the road and understandable. So I'm not as confused as I used to be, you know, that to, to no one's discredit. It's just, that's just the way things have worked and they've evolved quite well. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Demoda. CEO Given.
Yeah, thanks very much, Deputy Mayor Hall. Um, council, you know, I'll just point out that the purpose of the reserve descriptions is really to define the reserves. And there's a number of areas where council, you know, the first off, it's council policy and so the reserve descriptions are also councils' reserve descriptions um, and subject to you approving them or amending them as you see fit. Um, but I should note that the contribution formulas uh, really get into some of the things that we discussed in budget. Um, uh, for some of the, some, but not all, uh, have a contribution formula where there are sort of defined potential revenue sources. And uh, an example is the fixed assets reserve, which is intended to support future uh, and large scale projects for buildings and machine equipment and so on. Tangible capital assets. Um, in the contribution formula, you'll see, well, funding sources, you'll see that there's an annual transfer from general municipal offerings. Uh, so that would be something that we would budget for annually, uh, that you would see as a recommendation from administration at budget time. It also identifies that uh, an additional funding source could be annual operating surplus. And I'll just tie that operating surplus. So um, both of those two percentages, the annual transfer from general municipal operating revenue and the annual operating surplus. If you go down to the contribution formula, uh, it says that the annual transfer shall be equal to no less than one point four percent of the net book value of the municipality's tangible capital assets. That number, the net book value, is available in the municipality's annual audit and financial statements. So it's a number that's notable to council and the public. You can see how much the value of all of our stuff is. And the contribution formula says that we should be putting away an amount equal to one point four percent of the value of all of our stuff every year. In addition, uh, the policy sets out that we should dedicate fifty percent of any annual operating surplus directly to that reserve. So at the end of the year, when Natasha reports financial results, should we be fortunate enough to be in a position where there's a net positive surplus, uh, this administration would act in accordance with this policy. You'd see a recommendation coming from administration to say in accordance with the policy, um, you know, the, the annual operating surplus is a hundred thousand dollars and fifty thousand dollars of that, uh, it should be dedicated to the reserve. So you can start to see how, um, these are not constraints. Certainly council can, it's council's policy and council can choose to act against your policy if you wish. But for administration, it provides very clear guidance and the types of recommendations that we should be bringing forward to you. Um, some of the other ones that are uh, um, maybe also relevant, uh, the Community Housing Reserve, um, talks about an annual transfer. So annually budgeting tax dollars to go into uh, a community housing reserve equal to ten dollars per each resident of the municipality. So that's pretty easy math, you figure out with the rest, you know, number of residents we have and then ten dollars. So you'd see that at budget time as well as ten percent of any annual operating surplus. So we had fifty percent going into the fixed asset reserves and ten percent going here. Um, as well as a hundred percent of the proceeds of the sale of any housing assets. So if municipality were to divest itself or sell any of its properties, um, that might go directly to the system. So you can start to see um, how to set some guidelines for administration. Uh, the other one that I would point out is the Public Transportation Reserve. Um, the policy says an amount equal to ten percent of paid parking revenue from the prior year. So again, it starts to say, okay, well, we know what will be presented in budget. Um, council obviously can change any of those, but as administration gives us that guidance um, to make these decisions in a way that is in accordance with your wishes and is transparent to both you and the public. Um, and any of those items are subject to change. What we're looking for from you today is confirmation that we've got this right, that you're willing to try this. Um, and to give us that direction by recommending council approval of policy.
Counselor Demoda.
I appreciate that. Uh, thank you very much, Deputy Mayor Hall. I didn't say that enough today and I realize that as I said that, it's assumed and I shouldn't be saying it more uh, protocol and um, I respect the position. I, I want to say through you to uh, Mr. Given, I was glad that you brought up the contribution formulas and I was I was going to allude to two of the specific things that you were alluding to in um, that you referred to. I'm wondering, because it's in policy, if we're confined to those numbers, even though you say it's up to council, wouldn't it be a little easier for us to change things if we had a minimum of ten percent going to or a minimum of ten dollars? Because then we could put in more if we want, but we're committing to not put anything below that. So you know, at least then going forward, we're kind of, you know how we get into our budget deliberations, sometimes we start throwing money around and then not thinking, okay, well, now we have a policy say, okay, well, we can't send all of it over there because we're obligated to at least put ten percent in there. And if we want to increase it more, I just, I'm just wondering if, because it is policy and there's, it's a little bit it, it's not loose in there, I guess. So I guess, I think what I'm trying to say is it seems confining.
Uh, Deputy Mayor Hall for Council, it is, it is confining for administration. Uh, because it does sort of set the guardrails and council's expectations. Council can choose to vary any of those. So it would, uh, it would confine what administration would bring to you as a recommendation. Because we act in accordance with policy, then it'd be up to council, then council would have the latitude to decide, well, you know, we want this year I'll use the Community Housing Reserve, for example, uh, this, you know, this year council decides, no, actually, we want to put in twenty dollars per resident into the housing reserve. Uh, we want to go above that. And that's fine. That's certainly council's authority. Um, the thing that would be constrained would be our initial recommendation to you. But and it is, I think, helpful uh, to administration to have a, you know, that kind of constraint, um, because if it's if it's a minimum of, for example, um, then we're a bit stuck of, well, do we want to do minimum, minimum, or this year should we do a bit more of the minimum or, you know, and so I think it can be helpful to administration to have those clear guidelines and leave the um, decision to vary or go above or below up to council.
No, I think that's great and, and I appreciate that clarity and I think it'll be good too when we're discussing things that particularly budget type saying the reason this is not this because we're set by policy to set this, so it's up to council. If you want to change that, I appreciate that. Thank you.
Mayor Ireland.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Hall through you to either Mr. Given or Mrs. Melunchak. With respect to both the financial stabilization reserve and the utility operating reserve, I wonder whether the target should simply be described without an amount, but as a percentage. So one twelfth to one sixth of the last annual operating budget for either the utility or or that, because to put a number in there, we know that it's going to float. I don't know when we're going to get back to to this, but the idea is to have, say, two months in reserve. Um, but it's two months of what? It's two months of, say, the prior year's operating budget. It just seems to be, I don't know that we need to have numbers and they're such broad range anyway. I just throw that out there, whether that had been considered or not. And if I, if I may, if you, if you want to respond, go ahead. I, I have two other questions.
Deputy Mayor through to you, worship, it definitely be, could be considered. Um, so it would be a percentage based rather than the figure still suggesting that it should be a coverage of one to two months of operational expenses?
That's what I suggest you, because that's the, the threshold that you're trying to meet anyway, but it's a ruling number. So if we just said the target rolls along and it's between one twelfth and one sixth of the prior year's operating budget. And then it doesn't matter what the value of the target is, that's the standard that we're trying to achieve. You have two months worth of backup in the bank account or somewhere between one month and two months.
I see it being a possibility. Um, we could look at that.
Your worship, I think maybe, so that's absolutely possible. Um, and I think is, is really um, similar to the, you know, should be equal to one to two months. I think the potential utility of having a number in there is to demonstrate our, where we and for the council and the public where we are currently compared to what our target is. So, you know, for a reader, uh, even just, you know, either phrase the way that he added worship or that he should be equal to one to two months of the operating expenses in this town. Something needs to go in, figure out what last year's operating expense with municipality was. You know, a resident, for example, looking at our reserve policy to say, well, how much is the operating expense in municipality in twenty twenty-one? You have to go and figure that out and then, you know, um, where if we're able to say, you know, we look to have about two to four million dollars in reserve and right now we have one point whatever uh, or less, then it's pretty, those, those fixed numbers are a little bit easier for the public, uh, and to see and for administration report. That might be the only um, additional utility. Uh, my reason to keep a fixed number in there, but it is not it's not required.
Just a question. Uh, the next question I have relates to the Public Transportation Reserve. At there, I just um, have a question with respect to the contribution formula and particularly one hundred percent of payments in lieu of parking contributed to the transportation reserve. We have a, a fixed asset reserve proposed, which includes parking. And so if somebody pays us money in lieu of parking, it might be that we would want to use that money for parking instead of putting it all into the Public Transportation Reserve. So I, I wonder why we wouldn't um, put part of the, at least part of the payment in lieu of parking into the fixed asset reserve where we could spend it on parking.
Uh, your worship, I'll speak to that. This is, this is absolutely the kind of conversation that these, this schedule is intended to facilitate. Um, that's a, that's a very uh, distinct policy choice that you have um, available to you. And administration, I think this recommendation is uh, and obviously, you know, contributed to this with Director Melunchak. Administration is saying adding additional parking in Jasper's context is probably unlike probably what would be more useful to Jasper is taking money that people put in for parking and helping find ways to eliminate the need for more parking. So, which is a policy choice. And so that, and that, you know, for full transparency, that's the advice that, that this really is, is giving you is saying if somebody is paying to avoid having to put up a parking stalls, take that money and use it to find, to fund other means of transportation, help people get around with those their own private automobile. That might not be your policy choice. Um, and you may say, well, no, somebody pays to get out of having to provide a parking stall, then we should put that money into providing some parking stalls somewhere else in the municipality. I don't know if that's council's, you know, decision on how you want to use land or not. Um, and so very cool, this, that specific point is a clear uh, and intentional choice of saying, use money that funded individual parking stalls to fund transportation alternatives. And if council want to say, well, fifty fifty, have it here, have it there, or zero of it here, totally your, your choice.
There, actually, thank you. Although I, I might say that it wouldn't necessarily be used for new parking, but at some point we have to repay the existing parking.
Exactly.
We, we believe capital money, I'm only guessing, but council can debate that. Um, the last question that I had is with respect to the Community Housing Reserve and why there would be a maximum amount for that reserve. If, if we are going to um, get heavily invested in affordable housing for the community, um, a target balance with a maximum, um, I'm not sure that that necessarily serves um, the priority goal, but if you can address that, I would appreciate it.
Yeah, your worship, again, uh, and on all of these points, again, this is administration's advice, council can vary it. And that's the, that's the intention today. Um, on that one specifically, uh, the reason that it's a bit different than others in having a maximum is that uh, there probably becomes a point where rather than just holding money to build the housing in the future, you know, the community might like to know the council is going to spend the money actually building houses. So, you know, should that reserve have no maximum balance? It's possible. Um, and uh, or it should be a higher maximum, but it gets to the question of at what point can, you know, will you build up the bank account versus at what point will you start to spend to invest in, in delivering new housing units? Open question for council. Is it, is it no maximum? Uh, and council will just use it as you see fit. Is it a higher maximum? Is it a lower maximum? Those are all available to you. Um, administration's advice here was at two and a half million dollars. That might be a sign that we should start spending, you know, dedicating that money towards new housing.
If I might, just one last question, courtesy of Counselor Melnick, and I appreciate that I missed a discussion when this was last before Committee of the whole. Um, you've given a description of tangible capital assets, which will be included. Does the municipality own any intangible capital assets? Apart from all of the knowledge we posed in each of you, that is invaluable. Now, is there anything else that we would have in the nature of incorporeal irritants?
Yeah, you're gonna have to, you know, this one I got it, but seven, four, seven.
Yes, your worship, uh, municipality does both intangible capital assets.
And what, can you give me some examples? What, what would you classify as intangible assets?
I am trying to, right, right at the moment.
I, I, your worship, I think things that would be uh, could be, also, I don't think the term intangible capital assets is necessarily defined or used anywhere. But things that we would define as capital items uh, might include uh, documents or plans that have a greater line of your shelf. So the transportation master plan is a asset intangible. It's not something that we're going to sell. So it's not, it doesn't need the definition of intangible capital asset. I mean, we can print it out, self-poppies, I guess, but it isn't meant that way, but it is an item who would have a capital or one-time expense of some significant size and would deliver intellectual property or information that would have a shelf life of greater than couple of years. So things like your, yeah, a municipal development plan, um, uh, transportation master plans or any other type of master planning document might fit into the definition of a intangible capital asset. Certainly, there, there are capital items that you would see in capital budget that are intangible.
I might be able to add to that also. Um, with any of the studies, for instance, that have been completed, for instance, even the asset management plan, it, yes, was recognized as a, a capital expense. It was um, looked at as um, and brought into the system. That way it was expensed through the operating budget, however, still has that capital um, um, tangibility to it, you know, so it definitely, it, it, it's, it's going towards a future capital project. So that's where it would stand in the actual definition as well.
Right. Thank you. Um. Thank you, um. What did you call it earlier, philosophical discussion? I don't have some other use of philosophical. Thank you, I enjoyed that.
Thank you, I believe councillor Devota's hand is up.
Yeah, I, I always loosely thought that maybe intangible meant like our brand like the Jasper municipality of Jasper, our incorporation, uh, our website, things like that. The uh, my question is um, more along the lines with uh, what the mayor was asking earlier and getting back to the public transportation reserve, um, if just, I think I see now, like, because of the conversation, why there's like confining administration to certain things, but because there's this, the direct reference to the twenty twenty two public transportation study. Um, that doesn't mean that any solutions that are outside of that that can be potential, but that's something that council could still make a a decision on. This is just for when administration brings stuff to council, there's a direct line there because of, for an example, like accessibility for wheelchairs and if we decide to go with some enhancements in certain areas and we want to use sort of some of that money that comes from parking to to help with that, you know, transportation around town, like that's still part of people moving within the community that's outside of vehicles, things like that, you know, so I'm just, I'm not sp- specifically talking to that, but there might be other solutions that will arise. Or council might want to, you know, because we're, we're using that in downtown or specifically in other areas of the community that we can focus on. Improvements.
You have a comments or questions from council? Councillor Melnick?
Thank you very much, Deputy Mayor Hall. Um, looking at, at um the policy as written right now, we're actually preparing part of the budget for twenty twenty three in that we're assigning um, certain amounts that we'll set aside. And um, looking at our last financial statement, for example, the net tangible assets were about sixty million dollars. Um, of which we will be taking one point four percent of that, give or take, and point three five for fleet reserve. Um, so really what we're saying is we're already putting, this is what we're going to build into next year's budget if we go with these numbers. Um, it'd be interesting to know what we built into twenty twenty two as the transfer. But, you know, we, we haven't really, we've not done this before, so we're setting a whole new precedent as to how we're going to be budgeting. But, you know, on fifty million, it was seven hundred thousand dollars for the one point four, so on sixty um, you know, it's going to be seven hundred and change. So significant amounts to um, for us to consider and how that's going to affect our, our budgeting process for next year.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Hall, uh, through to councillor Melnick. Um, also, within the context of this policy, it might not be achievable within one year. It might be something that we work up towards um, as well, um. It would all be wonderful, but I don't see being um, uh, able to have two point five million in the housing reserve by next year, for instance, so these are um, goals um, that hopefully the municipality can achieve over time. Um, and um with the net book value, um. It it is just also a figure to put to it and and it's at least, but if if council that year decides that it's not a possibility, then it's also um, council's decision at that point to not um, go with that exact figure, so it it would be a decision every year to um, make whether or not, um, as Mr. Gibbon had suggested, whether or not um, we can make that um, occur in that given year. Thank you.
You? Want to comment or questions? Might be looking for a motion, please? To confirm their policy instantly? Mayor Ireland?
I'm not quite getting ready yet to make such a motion, but I would make a motion that Schedule A be amended to delete the word maximum in the target balance for the community housing reserve. And, you know, I can speak to that. That would mean the target balance is still two and a half million, and while I appreciate um, that there has to be a point where we start spending much as saving. Um, it is easy to foresee a situation where we build up the target balance and intend to spend and are then delayed and costs go up, and why not contribute another half million dollars to hit a a higher target? So the target is still two and a half million, but when it's a maximum, it seems to me that that restricts our flexibility I mean, to respond to circumstances. Um, and I, we can leave the target same, but just eliminate that word and provide potentially a little bit of flexibility for situations that could arise.
Thank you for your motion. Please, uh, councillor Devota?
I don't believe that was motion, I think. Oh, I thought you said that if, if you were going to make a motion, it would include that. Uh, but I didn't want, no, I'm not trying to obstruct, I just, um, I know that we went back a couple of months ago when you thought I was like cutting you off from making motions, but you didn't give anybody else a chance to jump in, so there you go. Anyway, I appreciate that, and I think that's a, that's a prudent approach. Thank you.
Any debates, debate on the motion? Do you wish to oppose your remarks in the motion? Thank you, just the ready, okay. All in favor? That is carried, and just wanted to ensure administration got that, okay, great. Mayor Ireland?
Again, I, I will make a, a similar motion to amend, although I'm struggling with it. Um, with respect to the public transportation reserve. Make a motion that the description of the contribution formula be amended to indicate up to one hundred percent of any payments in lieu of parking shall be contributed to the reserve. So we could take all of it. Um, sorry, now that's, that's the motion, but I just want to restrict it. Again, to give some flexibility, if it says a hundred, it means a hundred. Anytime we get money from payments in lieu of parking. If it says up to a hundred, then again, we can take a hundred percent if we want, but if there is a need to contribute that money elsewhere, I can't see that we harm ourselves by giving ourselves that degree of flexibility.
Councillor Devota?
Well, I think that's a little contrary to what Mr. Gibbon was saying earlier, because it's, it's confining administration to give us that hundred percent. And you know, I think, thinking back to when I had a little bit of a struggle with the most funding, um, before there was a situation on the, I think, the second uh, release of money, um, we got a budgetary um, document that came ahead of us and before council had an idea of where it was going to go, it was already put into going somewhere and I thought, well, I thought that was council's decision, so I think this kind of gives it a little bit more of a clear cut. But that's, again, my opinion, I'm not here to oppose it today, although it seems like I have.
So, uh, CEO Gibbon?
You're, um, Deputy Mayor Hall, just for your worship, so again, where there's up to, a term like up to um, that would tell me that we would need to administratively either decide how much we wish to dedicate to the reserve. Or every time there's a payment in lieu of parking, you will get a staff report to council and you will decide how much you wish to put into the reserve or what you'd like to do. So when there is variance available, uh, yeah, when there's a variance available, then we need to figure out how to, to apply that. And so it's either you cancel apply it and bring any payments in lieu of parking to you and you decide what to do with it, which is legitimate, fine, or we decide, which is not legitimate, fine. Then is that sort of contrary to why you have policies? So as long as council is okay with administration coming to you, not that we get blocks, I think that from time to time we get them, but not, not a time, obviously, there's not a time development, but um, as long as council is clear that the um, administration won't exercise that variance authority, we would come to you every time there was that situation, seek your guidance on how, how much of what percentage you want to dedicate to this. If it isn't one hundred percent.
Okay, thank you. Could would it have to be every time, or could you select them all to the end of the year to bring them to council?
We, we could, yeah.
Councillor Keller Happy?
I'm just curious what the process now, don't we have a dedi- dedicated reserve for um, that, those funds now?
Deputy Mayor, Sir Jocelyn Councillor Keller, empty. Um, yes, it's actually, um, it's own parking authority by law that is um, dedicating those reserves or those funds going straight to a reserve. So um, it, it typically has its own um, reserve now. Um, but it could be confined into this overseeing transportation um, reserve as being presented.
So is the intention then that you don't take the money from that reserve and move it over?
Yes, correct.
And there is a motion on the table. Is there any other debater? Do you want to speak to it again?
I mean, while I accept that from a strategic um perception, we should pursue public transportation. I think we cannot reasonably abandon parking. Um, and whether or not we need more parking, we need to maintain parking. And we are now, we've had a fund, people have contributed over a number of years, although it's not I'm not even sure that it's an annual event that somebody pays cash in lieu of parking. But we have always taken that money on the expectation that it would be used for parking purposes. Um, now we are going to lose that fund entirely, it's going to become a public transportation reserve or part of. I think that while I accept in principle going in that direction, um, I feel that we are committed to at least maintain existing parking. It is a necessary service that we provide in the community and it will have to be enhanced at some point, even if it's just fresh pavement, it's going to be capital expenditure. And why would we not have a reserve of some sort for that? So and I, I appreciate the difficulty of up to because it does open up the the sector that's, who's it up to? Who's it up to decide what is, whether it's up to a hundred percent? Does it, does it necessarily come back to council? I think that it should. I think that's one of the jobs that we have. See, I'm raising eyebrows, so I, I will I will in my my closing, which apparently I was not closing out.
I see a pen up in the councillor's direction.
Yeah, just a point uh, for clarity, like, I, I, I think that there, in my mind, there's a little bit of confusion here, or are we kind of mistaking? Um, you know, the purpose guidelines with um council direction, or is it more of uh, administrative procedure? Here, because what I'm, I'm understanding from Mr. Gibbon is that this, this sets the guidelines for administration to come to council. This isn't handcuffed council to the words in the document. Um, so I understand when, when Mr. Gibbon said, look, there's an ambiguous amount. It's up to administration to decide what they want to bring towards council or figure out what council wants and then have to come to council, which I think might be a healthy process in some circumstances, but I'm just, that's why I had my pen up, like, what exactly are we meeting through this? Because, you know, I, I heard Mr. Gibbon say that he likes the confinement uh, for administration, and then on this end, I feel like that some are not liking that, so. Kind of just I'm, I'm gonna vote in favor. I just want to know more than clear.
Sure, that was a question. Go to councillor Keller Happy?
Could we just not change the name to Public Transportation and Parking Reserve?
This, this is exactly the discussion. What, what, this is exactly the philosophy discussion, and this is why you have reserve policies. What are you saving money? Um, you know, it is, is the improvement, maintenance of a specific physical asset like parking responsible to the general tax base, or do you want to use one-time dollars to help build up some capacity to do that without the tax base having to pay for open fair and, but open policy discussion, you know, um. And if council want to change it to the uh, public transportation and parking reserve, that's up to you. Do you want to use, uh, you know, and so would say the, the purpose guidelines and, and, you know, what can it be used for? Is it for public transportation stuff? Or is it for public transportation stuff? And park, physical parking infrastructure for private automobiles? And, you know, I think this council certainly is, is uh, thought about environmental matters quite a bit, and you can see that there's an environmental consideration there. And, and that's, I think, the central point that that you're deciding.
Councillor Devota?
Can I throw sidewalks into that too? I don't know. Um, anyway, that was brilliant. I think you just spitballing and philosophizing again.
Thank you for that. I do read sidewalks under fixed asset reserve. It's already in there and so is parking, so I wonder if we would be at, you know, combining the two if we added parking to Mayor Ireland?
I made a motion, uh, which was debated, and I in fact was invited to close debate. Um, but with the consent of council, I am quite prepared to withdraw that motion. And if somebody wants to make a motion to change the description of the fixed asset reserve and the public transportation reserve, that sounds like a brilliant suggestion to me. But before we proceed with that, we have to deal with the motion. And it has not yet come to a vote, you haven't called the question, so I am prepared to withdraw the motion.
Motion is withdrawn, is that? No, we have to vote on that, I don't want to be, whatever. And councillor Keller Happy?
I'll make a motion that we change the name to Public Transportation and Parking Reserve, and because we already have a parking reserve, we're just moving the two together. And I think it makes sense.
Great to ask if there's any debate on this motion. Councillor Devota?
So, am I, to understand that the motion is that committee recommend council approve reserve policy B one one two and Schedule A with the suggested change? I just wanted to know what I was voting.
Sure. I, I think, um, there may be other changes, so we may want to vote on individual changes, because you, there might be others that come up before you want to recommend the amended policy and schedule to get as the concluding prayer.
We'll just go with public, like, and, and, of the transportation and parking reserve.
Councillor Boxer?
Would that mean then that parking would have to come out of the fixed asset? The word, the wording should come out of there. That would seem like one. Possible outcome when making this change.
Director Maltech?
Deputy Mayor, Sir George Counselor Boxer, I see uh, the possibility of removing the words under that context, however. I do also see the possibility of using that reserve for that that um, asset as well as. This reserve for that asset, I don't see um, that there would be any difference in that we could use um, one or the other, given the amount of money within the those reserves.
Counselor Boxer?
Sorry, and the other question was. Your oversight, because we probably have to make sure that that's in before we approve. Anything larger, is that right? Correct? You you had mentioned you had forgotten to put something in and. I just didn't want to prove something that was minus what you had indicated you wished it was in there.
Um, Deputy Hall for to Counselor Boxer, uh, that oversight was actually um, the just the um. Definition of tangible capital aid assets, which would be within the context of the actual policy under descriptions.
Counselor Keller Happy?
Excuse me, um. I see like if the parking lot needs a little bit of paint and it comes out of fixed asset of acid, but. In the past, like um. That money in the parking reserve, like if we have to add some stalls. That sort of thing, I can see that coming out of there, we need a project, like it's a kind of more of a major program. Project like say we needed to add um. More stalls, or we wanted to expand current parking lot. That's kind of where that money was went before for that reason. So that's where I kind of see that, like, you know, I know we're saying that, oh, you know, for the future, we may not be adding. Uh, stalls, but if we have uh, public housing and we have to add an area for parking. Then we may need that money. Because that's like the S block, that's where that money came from in order that project received.
Sorry, where did that money, which reserve, the public, public transportation reserve?
Yeah, well, it's not, it's called the parking reserve right now, so that money anytime there is new. Uh, building that don't have parking, that's where that money goes, and that's what that money has been used in the past for.
Mayor Ireland?
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Hall, I speak in. Favor of the motion from Counselor Keller Happy, but I have a question for. Administration, and that is if the motion is carried. So we change the name to Public Transportation and Parking or Public Transportation and Public Parking Reserve. Would that change necessitates? Also a change to the purpose guideline section to include public parking, and if so, and I saw a nod. And as a friendly amendment, I would suggest that. We change the name and we change the purpose guideline to say the public transportation or the public. Transportation and Public Parking Reserve supports the development of public parking and public transportation solutions identified. In the twenty twenty two public transportation study and so on.
Counselor Keller, will you accept that amendment?
Yes, I do.
Okay, thank you. There is a motion on the table. I'm gonna call it. All in favor. That is carried. I probably still have a few more motions to make on this, on this one, is there any? Uh, there are comments, questions? Council? We. Or a motion? Mayor Ireland?
I will make the motion that committee recommend council approve reserve policy B one one two and schedule A reserve. Descriptions as amended.
Thank you for your motion, any debates, emotions? Closing comments? All in favor? And that is approved. Great, okay. Let me get your one more and then we take a break. Moving on to agenda item seven point six, uh, Clean Energy Improvement Program. Do we have a ras here? He's waiting patiently in the wings for us, okay, great. Welcome.
Hello, everyone. Okay, I guess good afternoon right now, um. Uh, I'm I'm presenting the Clean Energy Improvement Program Report, uh, the recommendation to the council is to direct administration to work with Alberta municipalities. And develop uh, the following and present them to a future committee of the whole meeting. The two items are a Clean Energy Improvement Program business case for Jasper. Uh, and a draft Clean Energy Improvement Tax Bylaw. So the background on uh, on this program, on October twenty fifth, the committee directed administration to return to a future committee of the whole meeting with a report on the Clean Energy Improvement Program. And Property Assessed Clean Energy Legislation. Uh, and on November ninth, uh, the administration, myself, attended the CEIP, which is Clean Energy Improvement Program. One O one session with Alberta municipalities and gathered all the necessary information and additional information on implementing it at the municipality of Jasper. The presentation, along with some notes, that was presented at that uh, session has been attached to this uh, agenda, uh, to this R F D for your reference later on. And I'm just gonna touch on the key points from the entire presentation um, in this R F D. So what is the C program? Uh, it is basically a financing program uh, that the municipality can offer to their residential as well as their commercial uh, owners in the municipality. For uh, enabling them to. Uh, install energy efficiency and renewable energy upgrades. So uh, it's also known as the Property Assessed Clean Energy uh, Program in other jurisdiction, and in Alberta, it's called. Clean Energy Improvement Program, its uh, administration administrator is when Alberta municipalities. So uh, property owners are, can borrow funds from their municipalities to pay for energy efficiency and renewable energy upgrades on their properties. And uh, they will pay the money back over a period of years through the municipality property tax. And what makes it different from any other financing um, uh, instrument out there is the. Uh, it the. The funds are tied to the property and not the property owner, so when the property owner sells the property, they will also. Uh, the new owner will also take over the C A prepayment as well. Um, the key benefits, so once the program is launched, Alberta municipalities uh, seeks to onboard. Local contractors uh, like H V A C experts and insulation to boost the local economy. The homeowner enjoys energy efficiency and renewable energy upgrades, it reduces their energy costs. And also will increase typically increase their property value and um. As a financing program, it'll allow more, a larger and deeper retrofits to increase energy savings in. The different properties in the municipality, and that helps reduce the overall energy consumption of the town as a whole. It also provides some competitive interest rates and property owners can finance up to the entire hundred percent of the project cost if the project is eligible. And uh, the repayment terms of twenty five years or so. And how do we, like, what are the key steps in order to uh? Uh, implement this at the municipality of Jasper, so the first step would be to prepare a um, Clean Energy Improvement Tax Bylaw. And get that passed and approved, uh, and then the municipality will apply for, or look for sources for financing the program. Once that is complete, the property owners will uh, reach out to the program through the program administrator, that's C E, uh, sorry, Alberta municipalities. They will get pre-qualified and they will pick a contractor from their uh, approved list of contractors. And then once the co- project is approved um, by the administrator, the upgrades will be installed by the contractor. The administrator will confirm that the project has been installed, they will request from funds from the municipality and pay the contractors. And then the municipality will record the cost on property tax rolls. And the owner will repay the municipality uh, back over time. There are about twenty municipalities so far, uh, the list is there in the table that have a past, a Clean Energy Improvement Tax Bylaws. And they are in different stages of actually implementing this uh, C program. There are seven municipalities in Alberta that have implemented or launched the program so far. Financially, in order to carry out the recommendation, uh, it can be done within the existing approved budget and the business case uh, will. Uh, give more information on fiscal impacts. One key thing to note is that any borrowing that is made for the financial clean energy improvements will not count against the municipality's debt limit or debt service limit. So, yeah, that brings me to the end of my R F D.
Thank you very much for this, this sounds fantastic, I'm gonna, I'm, Counselor Wilson, you have your hand up.
Sure, yeah, your last comment, I actually just picked up on one of my concerns, and that's the uh, was my question was gonna be, does it affect the debt limit? I didn't think it did, and it sounds like it doesn't, um, but I just also want to be clear that uh. We're not, the the uh. Uh, the homeowners not paying the municipality back, in reality, they're paying. The their debt back and the municipality really just acts as a facilitator to that. Debt, I think, is. From what, yeah, yeah.
Well, so it's sorry if I can just clarify that, uh, so the municipality would would source. The money from whichever financial institution or borrower uh, available, and then the municipality will have the money that will uh, be. Given out to the different programs, and as they pay the taxes, the municipality will recover that amount, which they can in turn refi- re uh. Finance that same money out to different property owners as more projects are being implemented. At a, at a determined tax rate. Uh, it's sorry, interest rate, not tax rate.
Okay, thanks.
Counselor Melick?
Thank you. Thank you, Deputy Mayor Hall, I have a question on the. Recall of, uh, once the property owner is pre-qualified or visits a site. They look for a pre-qualified uh, contractor, qualified contractor. Um, do we have a number of contractors that are currently qualified under this program in our region? Or will we be, are contractors able to become qualified for this? Um, it sounds like a great program, but we also may be sending work out of the community to contractors that. Um, aren't living here and aren't um. Contributing to the municipal uh. Good by paying the property taxes and, you know, who ride the economic engine, I just wonder if we've, what that. Um, what a qualified, what that list of qualified contractors looks like.
So at the moment, I do not have the answer to if there are qualified contractors within uh, the municipality of Jasper or the town. But the way Alberta municipalities takes the approach is once the bylaw is passed and we start preparing for the implementation launch of the program. They will reach out to any available local contractors within uh, Jasper and. Uh, get them on board, they have a checklist of things that they do to get them into the qualified contractors list. And that'll be their first uh, approach, and if there aren't any available, I believe then any other. Contractors in the closest regions would be included in that list, but they want to reach out to Jasper first and find out if there are people interested and. Put them through that qualification uh, list, so they can be a qualified contractor.
See, you're given.
Uh, just addition to that, uh, Alberta municipalities lists the, on their website, how to become a qualified contractor, the steps are fairly easy. There's a contractor application form, which they commit to reviewing within five business days. Uh, once an application is assessed, they say that they'll work with the contractors to onboard them, there's some. Uh, minimum requirements that they need to meet, uh, including adhering to a qualified contractor terms and conditions. Qualified Contractor Code of Conduct and issuing escalation framework and marketing guidelines. Uh, but once somebody's met those conditions, um, and our municipalities as the program administrator is confident that they will deliver the service that people would expect. Then they can be listed in the Qualified Contractor Directory, it is uh, for us said, that's a part of the the process. Is actually building that capacity within the local communities as well, so if there were Jasper contractors that wish to do so, um, they could certainly have the opportunity to to be qualified.
Thank you, um, Mr. Given, I I appreciate that, and I think it's a really positive and important part of the program. That we look. First in our own community and then potentially in the region, and I I think that would be a good thing for some of our contractors. That may not get certain work because. The financing might not be available to the uh, potential client who wants to do the program.
The question is from uh, Mayor Ireland.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Hall, through you two. For us. Despite. Counselor Wilson's question and your answer. I remain. Uncertain about the source of the funding, so step one. Is that the municipality passes a bylaw. And sources funding for the program. From whom? Will we source the funding?
So as far as I understand, uh, the, it is up to the municipality from where they can source the funding based on the financial. Uh, you know, channels available to the municipality, so I can. Uh, that's, that's the best answer I have right now, and um, I can discuss with Alberta municipalities on the approach other municipalities have taken and and. Give an answer to that.
I like.
See, you have a.
Yeah, I can maybe assist, I know your worship that some municipalities have received uh, grants. Or low interest loans from clean municipal funds of F C M to capitalize their programs, I I don't know whether there's uh, capacity there or if that's still available, an avenue that would be available to us. So uh, we could receive funds from from the F C M, some municipalities have done that. Uh, we could utilize internal funds, so if we have monies in reserve, because there is a. Uh, a rate of return on any monies in this program, and it's paid back with an interest rate. Uh, we could choose as a part of the business plan to dedicate some of our internally held reserve funds that we didn't. You know, we'd be using in the near term uh, to capitalize the program, we could also see external funding. Either through uh, the Alberta Capital Finance where we typically borrow from, um, or from the private sector, or the private sector where we have the highest of all the interest rates. So there's a number of alternatives available to the municipality, uh, that would be a part of the consideration in the business plan about. How much, how big a program are you gonna start off with? And where are you gonna get that money from, and that would be one of the key considerations that we'd identify in the development of this time.
Well, yeah, thank you very much for that, Eric. I'm excited by the prospect. But I'm worried about. The prospect of really large uptake. Um, right away, and. So I I wonder whether we have an obligation before we pass a bylaw to. In fact. Find some sources of funding, the. The R F P suggests that we can carry this out within uh, the existing approved budget. But without external financing, I wonder whether we can, particularly if there is. Significant uptake, there might be lots of people want to put in. High efficiency. Furnaces and water heaters and new windows and new insulation, all sorts of energy refits. And I I don't know what we can afford or where we can get funding.
So uh, two two different, uh, a couple distinctions, first, um, the program is largely uh, focused on clean energy. Uh, and less on uh, energy efficiency retrofits, so I think that's an important distinction, um, and. Uh, the the bigger uh, picture would be, that's exactly why we would do. uh the the bigger uh picture would be, that's exactly why we would do the business case analysis. And so before passing a bylaw, council would see what the business case is. Uh I mean, we could have a program that's only funded to the level of twenty-five dollars next year. I mean, you wouldn't be able to do anything with that program. But theoretically, you could have, you know, establish the bylaw and say this is the maximum, first come, first served, applications be, you know, accepted on such and such date. We've only got a hundred thousand dollars to do it. Or whatever, or whatever. Um the reference in the RFD to the ability to carry out um uh within approved budget is carrying out the recommendation contained in this report, which is uh develop a business case and a draft energy improvement tax by law. In the RFD that comes forward with those, we'd have financial information for you about the any recommendations arising from those. But in order to develop the business case and the clean energy improvement tax file, those are things that can be done within the existing approved budget.
Counselor Devota?
I just. Well, to me, when I first heard about a carbon tax, that that would be like an ideal thing to to fund something like this. And uh we should probably talk about having a environmental summit in Smoky Lake. See what kind of initiatives are doing there. But I understand that Cold Lake is actually moving in the direction they back in February, they gave a uh thumbs up from what I read on moving in this direction. And I've always envisioned Jasper to have more alternative power solutions or clean energy. And I think one point for clarification, again, even though you just said uh through you, Deputy Mayor, to Mr. Given. So if, an example, I'm I'm a hired contractor, approved contractor, and Counselor Waxer wanted to go and put a solar panel on her house, this is not part of that? Would that be considered a retrofit? Or is this part of that clean energy initiative?
Uh so putting solar panels is one of the sort of easiest and most obvious examples in the program. Uh and yes, it would absolutely be on access to buildings. Um what I was referencing before is I I'm not certain and I don't believe, but I don't believe that uh the C program is intended for energy, pure energy efficiency improvements like high efficiency uh furnaces or improvement. Uh I think it really is focused on on the energy side of it and the energy production. Uh but again, that's something that we'd be able give counsel more detail on when we came forward with this case, a deeper analysis.
Go ahead, Ross.
Uh I just also want to add to that, that before homeowners can actually do uh energy upgrades, they will have to do a level two ashray energy audit of the house. So that's a requirement of the homeowners to make sure that the upgrades they're doing will actually save uh energy uh they use already use their energy usage in their homes. So it's not uh you can't just pick something and want to do it. You'll have to do a proper level to ashray energy audit. And then, once you get qualified, is when you can proceed with the project.
Uh Counselor Waxer?
Just looking at the uh sorry, through through you, Deputy Mayor Hall, to CEO Given, do you have any concerns around uh staff capacity to undertake the work? It looks like it would be a fair amount of work um meeting with residents and determine, you know, going through all the pain.
Well, I think um I don't have a particular concern with stuff past year, but recommendations contained in this report.
Okay.
The delivery of an actual program is something that I'd like to understand more about. And that's where we built the business case. Uh Alberta municipalities, as the program administrator, does uh support the municipality in initial development. Uh and then, uh I think, depending on the scale of the program we choose to launch, uh we're in control of how much resources that would take. I mean, if we have a fairly limited program that's only capitalized to a certain amount in the first couple of years, then really, you know, it wouldn't take many applications to to use up that money. If we had a really large program, we're allowed to launch it all in the first year. We got hundreds and hundreds of applications on it that you know, that might be a different conversation. Those are the types of things that I would consider in development in this case.
Thank you. Yes, go ahead.
I I also wanted to add a point regarding there is something called a program administration fees. Once the program is operational, so to offset the administration costs, both the municipality, for the municipality and the program administrator, there will be a five percent shared fee on projects that are being implemented to uh support the program going forward.
Counselor Wilson?
Yeah, and it sounds like uh counselors will still will have a fair amount of questions regarding the the program. And I think that that those questions and and administration will have those questions if we do um approve them, putting a business case together for Jasper. I think that's the next step to answer who who is the lender and you know, um uh who how much work does the uh municipality have to do? I think it's pretty minimal. Um so in in that if there's no more questions, I could put motion forward in that. Motion would be the committee direct administration to work with Alberta municipalities and develop the following and present them in a future committee of the whole median. That's the Clean Energy Improvement Program business case for Jasper. And as well, the draft Clean Energy Improvement Tax Bylaw.
Thank you, Counselor Wilson. Any debate to the motion, on the motion? If I see no hands, I will call the question. All in favor? And that motion is carried. Thank you very much, Mr. Khan, for joining us today and being very patient.
Thank you so much.
A wonderful study. All right, we are going to move on to agenda item seven point seven, Regional All Hazards Incident Management Team Agreement. And I am looking to Director Nodan. Welcome.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Hall. Um I'm here today to introduce uh an agreement for which we would need approval from council to enter into and um essentially, the province uh through the Alberta Emergency Management Agency organizes uh the province in multiple different regions, which are served by all hazards incident management teams. So all hazards, meaning uh no matter the disaster that might strike a community. Uh incident management teams are the structures that uh form the ECC. Might be the most familiar to you. Uh the Emergency Coordination Center. And so staff to manage the emergencies uh is what's contemplated here. Um as outlined in the report, this also serves as a mutually agreement for fire resources. So still in a lot of communities around the province, emergency management is closely tied to uh protected services, more generally speaking, and and fire departments. And um essentially, we've participated in some initiatives. Uh as the report outlines, we are technically part of the North Central Region, which is the Edmonton area and the Highway sixteen corridor. But through our discussions and participation in numerous events, we found that the Northwest team actually has a lot more in common with Jasper. And we were successful in advocating advocating with A U A, A E M A, sorry, um to join the Northwest team. So in terms of hazards, i.e. wildfire, uh community size, budget, resources, all kinds of items, we have a lot more in common with Northwest. And so uh in collaboration with Chief Conti, we've determined that that was a preferred approach and received approval from A E M A to do so. Um as you can see, the agreement is attached to the report and it it provides a framework so that all these mechanisms are already in place. Shall a request for assistance come from another community? Or should we be in a situation where uh we would be looking for help? So additional support either in the form of incident management team staff or fire protection resources like uh fire crews, trucks, but also trailers, like we have uh structural protection units with hoses, pumps, sprinklers to protect our community in the event of wildfire. I am happy to entertain any questions. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Director Nodan. Are there any questions from council? Counselor Wilson, did you have your head up? Okay. Uh but Counselor Melnick can then move to Mayor Ireland.
Thank you very much, Deputy Mayor Hall. And through you two, Ms. Nodan, um with the change in the agreement, I take it Edson and Hinton aren't are in the other region that we're leaving. That wouldn't preclude them from assisting us, would it?
Deputy Mayor Hall, through Counselor Melnick, um you you're absolutely correct that uh those communities are part of North Central and uh our our field officers for A E M A wouldn't change. We would still remain part of North Central Region. We would just join a different team based on on the items that I listed earlier. And certainly um coming, getting into mutually agreements with our immediate partners in the region is still a possibility. And that is actually something we're working on uh with the help of Mr. Given and his relationships with the CAOs in that region. And uh there's actually a meeting scheduled for January to see how we can collaborate on training and things like that. And uh yeah, so we would continue to work with those partners uh who are closer and arguably could deploy quicker than uh other vendors of either area, be it the Edmonton area or Northwest is more like Grand Prairie Peace Region and all the way up to High Level. And High Level is really has a lot of resources and a lot of expertise in uh wildland urban interface is part of why we want to join that region.
Thank you. I might continue with one other quick question. Um should should we be called upon for assistance? Um that would just be handled by the Emergency Management Committee as opposed to coming to council? It'll just be a decision that for us to be able to respond because we've got into this agreement?
Yes, thank you, Counselor Melnick. Um one clarification is that the Director of Emergency Management would be responsible for making that call. And um in all mutually agreement situations, the the offer for help is resource dependent. So if we had an incident going on here that the Director of Emergency Management would deem requires our crews to stay here and not deploy, that is entirely within our purview and and contemplated in the agreement. So um there's a form and a process to request, and the answer is always subject to availability is the is the premise.
Thank you very much for that. I appreciate it.
Thank you, uh Mayor Ireland.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Hall. I am very happy to say that Counselor Melnick artfully elicited elicited the information I was seeking, which was eloquently delivered by Ms. Nodan. So I in fact have no question remaining.
Great. You have your hand up. You're just waiting. Counselor Wilson?
If we were able to respond to an emergency in the in another county or uh area, does it come at a cost to the municipality?
Deputy Mayor Hall, through the Counselor Wilson, um you'll see that as part of the agreement, one of the appendices is actually a rate schedule, which um so by entering into the agreement, we support that rate schedule and that's what we would be able to charge for our equipment and our staff. And um there's also a provincial uh document that is provided by Alberta Transportation, I believe, that constant contemplates those mutually agreements. And if there's uh discord around the rates, there is a provincial rate sheet that we can refer to. But um the short answer is that the rates that are listed in appendix. I'm looking for it now. It's appendix two, maybe? Is is what we would be able to charge out for sending our crews. And just as an additional interesting tidbit of information, uh part of the capital budget that was approved by council for twenty twenty-three included um equipment for one of our structural protection units. So that's the trailers with the hoses, pumps, sprinklers, et cetera. And uh Chief Conti's plan is to have one unit that is specialized for Jasper that stays here, that doesn't go anywhere. And then to have the other trailer uh equipped with resources that meet the provincial deployment requirements. So we could send that unit to B C or to Alberta and actually generate revenue from one of our crews getting deployed with our equipment.
Thank you for that. Any other questions from council? I am looking to council, please, for a motion. Counselor Wilson? Counselor Wilson?
I would make the motion that committee recommended council that uh that council enters into the Northwest Alberta Emergency Resource Agreement as presented.
Thank you very much for your motion. Is there any debate on the motion? I will call the question. All in favor? And that motion is carried. I'm looking to council. Do we need a quick break? Or shall I move into? Yes, quick break. Okay. It is three oh eight. We will reconvene at three fifteen. That gives everybody seven minutes. Welcome back. We are moving on to agenda item seven point eight, Commercial Use of Public Space Patio Seating. I believe I'm going to be, yeah, CEO Given.
Thanks very much, Deputy Mayor Hall. Uh so I'm here today uh bringing forward information from the Commercial Use of Public Space Task Force. Um and the recommendations are the committee recommend council approved both standards uh for patio seating as recommended by the Commercial Use of Public Space Task Force and the committee direct administration work with Parks Canada to implement both standards for the twenty twenty-three season beyond it. Uh the commercial use of public space task force was struck by council earlier this year. Uh the terms you reference are attached to the RFD, but uh in in essence, and I know all council members are very familiar with this. Uh was intended to inform the municipality's approach to commercial use of public space or more commonly patios um. And uh to be able to give council um some direction on the community's desired standard. Um so the council could use that in your discussions uh with Parks Canada. Um the task force was made up of representatives of the Chamber of Commerce. And I see uh Patty uh is here and has been here all day, you know, the council. Um representatives of the Chamber of Commerce, Tourism Jasper and council. Uh the committee met uh three times uh earlier in the uh summer, uh July and August, and then once more December fifth to confirm group's recommendations to council. There was a bit of a gap in time there, uh really just due to administrative capacity. So we want to make sure that take the uh task force members off the hook. Uh council had established a timeline, gave response back and doing the check of the wildfire and municipal budgets that and then capacity just wasn't there to get the group to where they needed to be. Um I'll maybe move into the proposed standards table. Uh the uh group ran through a number of different workshops, looked at uh other municipalities that might be relevant, comparators. Uh they discussed at a broad level who uh patios and public space serves uh and identified that there are uh the direct users and then those that are impacted by the use. Uh so you know, the difference between somebody who's sitting on a patio installation and somebody who's walking by a patio installation. Uh they they impact both those people. Uh they talked about what they saw as some of the do's and don'ts of being successful. And then they got into some potential design principles uh which uh evolved into the proposed standard. Um so the committee attempted to address a number of the common areas where there's discussion. Um and uh you can see the proposed standards there. I won't read through all of them. Uh I'll maybe hit a a couple of the high points uh around um a few different sections. First, the term continues to be uh limited uh to the under uh six months. That's intentional. Our, I think the committee's understanding was that uh from a parks perspective, anything over that begins to become uh start to look a bit more like additional uh commercial square footage, which uh can be challenging with respect to the commercial channel. Additionally, from an administrative municipal administrative perspective, there's a reason to to have a limited period uh that is consistent. Uh because um the installation of patios, particularly those in the park, it might interfere with municipal operations like snow or on the street sweeping. So there is some benefit to having them go out after the the spring cleanup and come in before the snow typically flies. Uh the clear pedestrian zone, um you'll see there the distinction that uh really says in essence that uh a pedestrian pathway equal to the width of the existing sidewalk should be maintained at all times. Um and so um ensuring that pedestrians never have less than the amount of space that they would have under certain standard conditions. Um this was one where the committee did have a significant amount of discussion. Um and needed to to really uh decide. But it mean, uh it does mean uh the practical implication implication of this is that you wouldn't be uh you wouldn't see installations that had both a sidewalk seating component. And seating in the parking lane. Because the total area available to pedestrians would be reduced. So it would be either you have seating on the sidewalk with a pedestrian walk around or you have seating in the uh parking lane uh with the best we can still be having the sidewalk uh available to them. Uh so that's the intent behind that one. Uh both the orientations are allowed, although again it's sort of an either or rather than both. Uh so with the seating on the sidewalk or the seating in the parking lane. Um some minor changes to the uh maximum height. Um discussion about types of materials uh within an effort to ensure there's consistency. Um there is a discussion around the the maximum size uh and a limitation. Currently, under the current program, there was no particular limitation in the number of stalls that could be utilized. Um the committee is recommending that be a maximum of three stalls and they be adjacent only to the building that the business is physically located in. So there is a challenge with some businesses that are located even below or above grade. Uh sorry, my second story. Um the committee uh didn't sort of address either of those. Uh both of it still be allowed. The limitation would be that the uh patio installation needs to actually be adjacent in front of the building that the business is located in. So you can't go in front of somebody else's building. Yours. Um and then that limitation in the maximum number of uh stalls uh tents, uh the committee, after some significant discussion, was uh in agreement with the direction from Parks Canada, the tent should not be allowed. Uh this is obviously a uh significant significant discussion in the past with the community. Um and uh councillor Wilson or uh councillor wanted me to speak to this, but I think the nature of the discussion was that uh tents, although they do provide uh additional sort of protection for inclement weather. Um that they do also impact uh sightlines and impact the experience of destination or enjoyment of destination for people who may not be using. And so if you're just walking along the sidewalk, the the tents would be in your view and um the other I think observation was that on bad days um tents get significantly less use even even if they're a tent. So uh the committee is uh willing to agree uh with again, that direction of Parks Canada. Umbrellas continue to be allowed with respect to colors. Um the committee actually got a bit more specific in this area, saying umbrellas must be black in color. Or consistent with the approved building colors. So again, a a desire to allow for some variation. Um but within the overall context of of the community and things that have been previously approved. So you wouldn't, you know, so a if your building isn't already pink, um and and you know, you you aren't going to have a pink umbrella. You know, the base should be a black umbrella, uh or if you want some variety and you decide you want to customize it, then it should be sort of keyed into what the building is. Uh and I think the discussion there was Parks Canada has already approved the colors of buildings and so therefore those should be reasonable sort of uh uh variations. Um jersey barriers uh are uh not recommended to be allowed or not allowed. There was a recommendation that the municipality should provide flower planters for use on the um uh end of installation spacing the direction of oncoming traffic, particularly on cannot drive. So we're, you know, we have a little bit larger roadway, potentially higher speeds, rather than using Jersey bears, you know, all the way around an installation. There should be that uh more solid barrier facing the direction of oncoming traffic. Um but then alongside that the uh railings uh either wood or painted metal would be appropriate. Um. Um. The uh there are some other smaller items of additional considerations, which are just I think relatively minor program improvements um around signage to ensure that there's consistent signage showing pedestrians how they should be getting around. There's an observation that last year, we, some people saw pedestrians walking around things that weren't intended to be the walk around. Uh they would actually go into the roadway rather than walking around the boardwalk. Um. Uh. The uh ensuring that water metal barriers parallel the driving lane uh are designed in such a way that prevents children from accessing the roadway. Um that the municipality should consider developing a set of design uh template designs that meet all these criteria. Um that installations that have already received a three-year approval should be required to meet these new standards only after their existing three-year approval is is expired. Um so transitional consideration there. And finally, that any installations meeting these new criteria uh should be granted a five-year term to allow those businesses that invest in that physical installation uh to have some time to generate financial uh return from there from that investment. Uh so the next step on this matter is for council to confirm its support of the uh recommendations from the the cops task force. Uh and then uh the administration could take these for Parks Canada for consideration. Um I think that these are uh there's nothing that's a significant deviation from uh the approach of the municipality and state of the past. I don't see anything here that would not be supported by parks. Um the advantage to this process is that there's been some fairly uh detailed discussion. That's included members of council and business community. Um and there's been, I think, some compromise through through the discussion. Um and this is really reflective of things that business communities likely will support. Uh. And with that, uh Deputy Mayor Hall, I think I'll turn over to council for any questions.
Thank you very much for that C O given. Questions or comments from council? Councillor Keller Remy.
So if I understand this correctly, you can be on the sidewalk and you have a walk around or you're in the parking lane and the full area in front of your business is pedestrian.
That's correct.
So then if somebody is below ground or above ground, they're allowed patio provided it's on front of that building.
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Councillor Demora and then councillor Wexford.
I have a question just for clarification, and this might have been at one of the meetings that I missed. Um for the installations that have received a three-year approval in twenty twenty two, were any of those um do any of those have both the walk around and sidewalk seating?
The councillor, well, I don't know the answer to that. I would have to look and see.
Yeah, because that that can pose some issues with with the recommendation for it. I just thought of it now because uh I don't, I'm not aware of any. But um if there were, then that might have been the process. And I don't think that Parks Canada would allow that for that anyways.
But I think uh you know, the oh and certainly administrations intent would want to ensure that there was, that if somebody did their best to meet our previous standard. Um it wouldn't be the uh municipal administration's approach to change the standard and tell somebody that they had to meet it. You know, and and so that's the the intent around that three-year approval. So when we gave three-year approvals last year, I believe that as the municipality were bound to honor those three-year approvals that were given. When that three years expires, then those applicants would be required to meet this new standard. So uh if anybody received a three-year approval that isn't consistent with this, um at the expiration of that three-year approval, then they have to be this new standard. Again, we just want to ensure that there's that certainty for businesses. Uh that's been municipal administration's desire through the entire process is to to establish some level of certainty. We know that's been sadly missing. For this entire discussion, it seems like the decision has always been sort of behind and hasn't been able to businesses to invest. Um and uh again, on behalf of myself and and the M O J, and we certainly don't want to be changing the rules midstream when we told somebody that they'd have a three-year approval last year.
Uh do I defer?
Through you, Deputy Mayor Hall to C O given, do you anticipate any significant cost for these planters that would uh now provide the safety element?
The uh I mean, that is a recommendation from the committee. And so operationally, we just have to make sure that we have enough, you know, fair enough to launch them. Um but my understanding from uh Mr. Grayhead and operations is that we have a pretty good inventory and that we should be able to demand uh as long as it's limited to cannot uh and not the others. And so I think that that's uh that I think it's manageable. I don't foresee us having to go and purchase new inventory to do that. Um and if we did, that would be the type of thing we'd great for to council. It's on the future by decision.
Uh councillor Keller Remy.
Thank you Deputy Mayor Hall. I'm here to Mr. Given. And I have another question. Last year, we had a number of business share a patio. Is that allowed or that will be not allowed?
Uh that wasn't discussed by the committee. Um I think if a patio is continues to be adjacent to one of the, at least one of the businesses that that are sort of sharing, uh that would seem to be the criteria. I mean, if it meant all the other criteria. Um and was it, you know, didn't exceed the size, allowed pedestrian zone, colors, everything else. Um and was adjacent to at least one of the businesses. If a business wants to allow some other businesses, customers to sit on a patio, I think that's an operational decision for that.
Thank you councillor Wilson.
Yeah, just follow up on that. Um. Who applies for the uh the permit to business owner or the landlord?
It's the business owner, but they do need landlord approval.
Right. So one thing I I think we overlooked in this regard, and maybe maybe not, um but a three, three-stall uh patio would be allowed to one business. And if there was a second business in that same building, would they get three stalls? Or I guess it's 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 uh catch caught by the uh it has to be frontage of the building.
Yeah, uh so we we faced a little bit of this. We discussed this last year in implementing the program and it never really ended up coming up. Uh but it is, it is possible that you get a whole bunch of businesses in the same building, all walking the same parking stalls. Uh I think in that case, we uh moved on a first come, first served basis last year. So we have an opening for applications. Those applications are received and then, you know, and and dealt with in the earth that they're received. Uh and I don't, so that that was our strategy last year. And I don't believe uh and I can go and check and see, but I don't believe that situation ever really occurred, not to any great extent.
My councillor Melnick.
Thank you Deputy Mayor Hall for you, Mr. Given. Um first of all, thanks to everybody on the task force, a very um a broad group of individuals who came together and a lot of which here is is great. Um I'm looking at the the approval last year for three years. Will that also be that mean that tents that were allowed last year will be allowed for the next two years?
If there was an installation that used tents, they did not receive a three-year approval last year. Because they were not in conference with the the standard that was that was approved last year.
Thank you. And and just a follow-up question on the change where the business needs to the the ability to have sidewalk seating needs to be right in front of your building. If there are municipal physical barriers that prevent that. Uh I know of at least one instance where a restaurant was offset from from their um front door and their frontage. Um they probably weren't given a three-year lease either. Um or if they were, would that mean we'd honor that for the next two years?
Uh I think you're, you know, there are only so many installations, but I think you're talking about an installation on Patricia. Um and in that case, there is, yeah, there is a municipal crosswalk that's right there. And so they'd really be right in front of the front door of their business. Uh was not there, but I believe that they were at least partially in front of the building that they were in. Uh and so again, with the building owner's consent, uh uh that one uh received approval. I believe it met all of the conditions that the municipality had last year. So I think there would likely be a line uh and would receive that three-year approval. They don't would need to refer to sort of the actual application to make them that.
Thank you. And the last follow-up was for those that would have received three-year um last year approved for three years, would those have included jersey barriers or agree have not approved the use of jersey barriers for three years?
I'm going to, I would need, uh sorry, Deputy Mayor Hall for councillor Melnick, I would need to refer specifically to what we had written on the application forms last year. Um. But the 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 principle here is if somebody received duly sought and received approval under the rules last year and they're in conference with the rules last year. We don't want to force them to change next year. But you know, when their approval expires, then they'll have to meet the new standard. Uh that's the that's the principle that's at play here in terms of how we administer the program. That's how we administer it. So if somebody had jersey bears last year and they received a three-year approval with jersey bearers. Then they will have, you know, the next couple of years to transition uh away from that. Um. Yeah, and and I think that that's just a good administrative yeah administrative principle and and how we uh deliver programs. We want to ensure that we transition to new standards, but without causing financial hardship on people who did the right thing by seeking to conform to the rules that we published.
Thank you very much.
I see councillor Wilson, your hand up.
Yeah, it was just in regards to the uh um sorry, jersey bears, I I don't think any um patios were approved with jersey bears in in use. I think that was from Parks Canada's viewpoint. Uh jersey bears would be approved this year, but but not in in sorry, last year, but not years to come. Um I think you, there was suggestion that you could still use them at that point. Um but no is this, I don't think cladded them with wood or, you know, did did anything to uh to disguise them as not jersey bears. So that would be that they wouldn't have been approved for three years.
Thank you for that, uh councillor Devota.
Um I'm willing to defer to the mayor. I had comments on the overall um statistics of traffic and pedestrian use in the downtown core. So it's to add to this discussion, but not related to anything specific in here.
Mayor Ireland.
Thank you Deputy Mayor Hall through you to Mr. Given. And this is Pat Lovey. I wanted to start by thanking the task force for a really difficult task that that we assigned to them. I appreciate how difficult so many of these items are and I'm thankful that I was not on that task force. But I still have some questions that I, you indicated in your presentation, Mr. Given, that um there was some debate um among task force members about some of the issues, perhaps more debate about some than others. What was the the process to come to the recommendation? Was it consensus or or vote? How did how did this recommendation?
I would say that generally, uh your worship through uh Deputy Hall, it was a consensus-based approach. Um councillor Wilson or Demote may, you know, have perspective on that as committee members. The final meeting of the committee uh was held virtually. Uh I wasn't able to be in attendance. That was to discuss the pedestrian access area where there was uh I think a need for greater understanding and and maybe some difference of opinion. And I'm not sure uh exactly, I'm not sure exactly how that meeting went down. So I don't know if councillor or councillor somewhere in the town to that one. Uh but the administration understanding was that the committee uh it didn't have a voting structure. Uh and there was generally consensus building approach in terms of all discussions. So there was that meeting in December, Jeff, I think it was. Uh was that last one? It was hosted by uh James Jackson. Uh for the committee to discuss the pedestrian zone. Uh councillors, if you were to speak to how the committee decided that if it was arm wrestling.
Neither of us were at that meeting. But but throughout the the rest of the uh process, it was all consensus consensus.
Okay, I appreciate that. Um if I could just go through some of the particular questions I have on the pedestrian zone, the clear pedestrian zone issue. Um. Is there a standard with sidewalk for the community? And are all our sidewalks uh the same width? So it it occurs to me that unless we put some sort of parameters around this, potentially not everybody is treated equal. Um and I'm thinking in particular of of a corner establishment. Um. And who's to say whether that existing sidewalk is really public sidewalk or not? So it's it's sidewalk seating in an area that is, I think, appreciably wider than most sidewalks. But that's what's existing. So is that all sidewalk? What happens there?
So two. So two, uh, a couple of thoughts. So first, uh, direct answer to your question, no, there's not a standard with towards sidewalk. There, you know, uh, the sidewalk sign. Patricia are different width than on Cott. And so, you know, we have at least a couple of different widths of sidewalk, uh, in, in the areas that would be in question. And, uh, there are some areas where there may be some portion. This is something I would have to look at to be certain. Uh, but there may be some portion of what appears to be public sidewalk that's actually private property. Uh, and if that's the case, then we would have to take that into account. Uh, and, uh, these recommendations from the task force are just recommendations to council. They are not a bylaw. They're not a recommendation for a bylaw. It would still have to be translated by administration into a program that could be delivered. And there are probably, well, there, there will be, uh, unique cases that we'll have to consider every time that we've delivered this program. Something comes up that we hadn't bought up before. Uh, and your worship, but this, if. The intends, if council supports the intent of maintaining a clear pedestrian path, but equal to the width of the existing sidewalk. Then administration would have to figure out exactly what that looks like. Is it measured from the face of the building? Is it measured from the end of the public property? Is it? So there are, there are some questions in terms of the limitation. I think that the committee is doing this recommending, you know. Standard, you know, principles towards a standard and then adminis, and some of these are just in, I think, our direction to administration. On what to incorporate in a, in a program offered in 2023. So. Now I didn't. Answer specifically your question about, you know, uh, a corner facing business. We'd have to look at that specific property. Um, and with myself and Mr. Jones to figure out exactly how do we handle this one.
If I may continue, the, the question of Jersey barrier barriers elicited. Lots of discussion at this table initially and. Throughout the history. Of this endeavor, particularly around. Liability. So this task force has made a, made a recommendation. Is there any suggestion? That. Before council approves, we should. Seek. Uh, any legal opinion about liability that particularly concerned, we were, we were told, I think, um, fairly certainly that. Liability was an issue and that's why Jersey barriers were recommended. Now I, I don't know how things will play out when there's a should in here. That. The municipality should provide. Flower planters. If we provide something that is provided. In the expectation that that provides adequate safety. And it doesn't. Then what is the exposure of the municipality? Um, so I. I don't know where we stand in terms of, of liability issues from. Point of view of our organization.
Yeah, thanks, your worship. So from an administrative perspective, I think that there are different views within municipal administration about. Liability and risk tolerance and exposing the risk. Uh, and this is one of those cases. Uh, I think you would find, uh, members of our organization would say. Prevent 100% of any possible occurrences, use Jersey Bears everywhere. Uh, and I know that for a fact and, and that's not, not completely unreasonable. That's a good, you know, good reason to take that position. Uh, there are other views that would say. Looking across other municipalities. We can't find others that have a standard of putting Jersey Bears all the way around these types of installations. Uh, in larger communities, in the US, in Canada, um, this is an unusual standard. And so why would we be doing a unusual standard? If other municipalities have been able to, you know, sort of see their way to managing that type of risk. And so I think that there are other steps to manage risk in there, uh, in terms of. Preventing access for children from wandering into, uh, into, uh, the traveling vehicle lanes. Um, and the, uh, consideration around the, uh. Flower planters was sort of a, a recognition of, well, if there is any area of heightened risk. Then it would be facing oncoming traffic. Um, and it would be on Cott Drive. Those would be the areas where there'd be the greatest risk. And so the municipality may want to consider using this concrete flower planters to, to mitigate that risk. So there's a risk mitigation approach that's built in here. Um, and I think possibly from administration previously, you heard a, a lower tolerance from risk. I'm comfortable. And certainly gave the advice to the, the committee that, uh. Administration, administration underneath is comfortable with the taking risk mitigation approach where we identify our greatest exposure is, and we take appropriate steps to mitigate where possible.
Turned away. I see risk in two different ways. One is the risk of injury to patrons. The other is who bears the risk that there is. An incident. And if the municipality voluntarily says, we will mitigate risk of injury by putting. Our asset out there so somebody can run into that. Then have we taken over the liability situation from the operator? And is that our intent?
But your worship, I think, uh, since it is. Use of public space, so it is allowing some other entity to use our space, we'll be accepting risk no matter what. Right? I mean, the, the ultimate way to reduce this risk would be to say. No patio seating in parking lots. And then there's no risk. Uh, we're accepting some risk by allowing, you know, a private entity to use public space. Um, and when we start to get into that area, then. Your worship, given your. Your profession, you know that when, when an incident happens, everybody would be named in a lawsuit, no matter what. The operator would be named, Parks Canada would be named, the municipality would be named, and that's, you know, uh, uh, I think that's just. How it generally happens. I think. We as a entity, the municipality, need to ensure that we've done due diligence to mitigate risk where possible, uh, to a, to a reasonable extent. And I think that the recommendations here do that. And council may have a different. Risk appetite than what's recommended here. Council may say, no, we absolutely want to have. You know. We absolutely want to have Jersey Bears all the way around and that we're going to go to the map for that because we think that that's the best risk mitigation we have, a little lower risk tolerance. Where we have the ultimately low risk tolerance and saying, no, nobody should sit in the parking lane ever. It's just not safe. Or. And don't worry about it. Throw up some, some chairs and, and don't worry about a fence because people know where they should go and where they should go. Of being extreme, obviously, that there is a. It's a spectrum of risk tolerance there. Um, and I'm comfortable that administration could apply this in a way that would mitigate the municipality's risk to a reasonable extent. Recognizing that in any kind of unfortunate circumstance. We will. Bear some exposure no matter what.
My final observation. Is simply with respect to. Umbrellas. And I continue to struggle and I. Respect. That the task force. Must have discussed this, but. To me, it, it runs contrary. To. Our proclamation with respect to. Inclusivity and diversity and that exchanges that for uniformity. And. Even allowing for. Umbrellas that might have the color of the. Approved building, the reality is that. Many of the businesses are operated by entities separate from the building owner. Um, so they cannot brand. Um, unless they've already branded your building and it might not be their building. If a business. Wanted to attract. The LGBTQ community with rainbow umbrellas. We can't have that in our community. An entity that has already branded itself in Canada's color. Could not use. That color. It's, to me, it is, it is overreach, but again, um, I'm sure it was a difficult discussion that. The task force, but I, I find it. Very difficult to support. That particular. Suggestion.
Thank you. I wonder, I'm just have a quick. Uh, comment about Jersey barriers because I also feel that they are the safest. And I wonder if in researching, looking at other areas that don't use them, is it because? They're in pedestrian zones. There's no cars. Driving by these patios, like in my limited, you know, I have people searched and checked out patios and. Most seem to be in areas where there's not cars.
Um, Deputy Mayor Hall, the, uh, committee identified a, a number of different comparative communities, including BAf, Canmore, uh, Nelson, Edmonton was the one where, uh, you know. Uh, you can't see patios in a number of different areas where that are not exclusively pedestrian only. Um, and so, uh, so no, I, I don't think it's because they're limited pedestrian only areas. Um, it, it just doesn't appear to be a, a commonly held standard, but, uh, in terms of using Jersey Bears.
Councillor Devota and councillor Wilson.
Yeah, thank you. Um, and that's one of the reasons why we included a city in there and it being the closest one that, uh. At, in our minds at the time, um. Took some progressive and proactive approaches to what they were doing with, uh, people sitting in, in parking lanes. With traffic going by. Uh, but I did want to make a comment on the Jersey barriers and. At the time when the Jersey barriers were approved by council as an initiative, it was a response to the pandemic and Parks Canada. Uh, kind of gave us the ability, I wouldn't say authority, to, to approve, um. Such devices to, to protect people sitting in, in parking lanes. And that came out of, uh, recommendation. Uh, from administration that did research and found that to be the safest way to go about it. And, uh. Again, at that time, parks, I believe, only let us do that for a year and then it got expanded into two years because. You know, the continuation of, of restrictions. So, um. Those decisions were made by elected officials in our community, uh, with the ability to make those decisions by Parks Canada. Parks Canada then. Had, uh, public advisory, uh, from the public advisory committee and they deemed that the Jersey barriers were outside the crisis. What I believe. Occurred. I'm not saying this is true. I'm just, I'm just telling you what I understand. So, um, PDAC. Uh, had recommended certain recommendations and, and that's what came forward from Parks Canada and thus. The drive to remove the Jersey Bears and, uh, you know, attention to, to umbrella. So I do have my own personal opinions. On, on those things, but just as a background, that's kind of where we're at and the reason why we're at, I personally believe that, that Jersey, like councillor. Uh, Deputy Mayor Hall, um, the Jersey barriers seem to me as the safer alternative. However. Um, you know, it's at this point right now, um, not really in our control to make that decision. So. That's kind of where that gray area is and it's hard to like the recommendations coming forward are based on. Um, that information. To my knowledge. And if I may, as respect to, uh, what Mayor Ireland brought up on the umbrellas. Um, again. I, I, it's a bit ambiguous to me because I still don't know what a definition of a tent versus an umbrella is because there are umbrella applications that cover the exact same. Uh, area and size and same shape as a rectangle or a square. The, the four corner ones do with a middle post on it. And that's considered an umbrella because it has a middle post and then. These other ones have four posts on them, but they're considered tents because they're different than umbrellas. Uh, so I, still I have issues, personal issues with that, but I understand, uh, where we might with these recommendations.
Thank you, councillor Wilson. Do you want to add?
Yeah, I would just to speak to, uh, what Mayor Ireland had brought up regarding tents. And to be honest, the, the, uh. Uh, task force did not discuss tents to, uh, any, uh, large, uh, like did not. Really discuss tents except at the first or. Second meeting, um, and we accepted. The direction that Parks Canada had given us because we would still be on that task force if we were still. Um, if we were trying to push. One item, meaning ten, uh, which is tense. And what we wanted to come out of it and, and, uh, our deadline date was October. Thirty or maybe October 1st. I'm not sure which one, but we didn't have the time to, to. Come up with a, and fight the fight regarding tents. We accepted. What the entity, uh, who has land use and planning, uh, had intentionally. Took the time to write a letter. At the exact time that the task force was, was, was starting. So we accepted that and we moved forward and I think we, we came out with some security, uh, some direction for businesses to move forward. Because we would still be at the table, uh, if we were to be discussing, uh, how to push back against. Yeah, um, the direction Parks Canada had given us.
Mayor Ireland.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Hall. And, and if I may, if. If there were tents across my lips. That was inadvertent. I, I was referring only to umbrellas and the color. Uh, I would have expected that tents would have been more of a discussion point, but it's not my point at all. My point is with respect to. The limitation on. The coloring of umbrellas.
Councillor Devota.
As a individual councillor outside the, uh, working room, um, I, I support and understand and. Um, I'm with the mayor on this one because, uh. You know, at first I was, when we, the pandemic first started, I was looking for some uniformity and, and. And now I understand why it wasn't a good idea. Um, although I didn't push for it, um, it was, what am I, I was looking for motif and now. Um, the motif I have in mind is, is different than, than what is really being forced upon. You know, the decision making process. So I, uh, again, I respect what's come out of this and, uh. To echo what councillor Wilson said, we, we had to, to give some and take some to, to get these forward to council.
Any other comments or questions from council? Other questions? Councillor, uh, Mayor Ireland.
Just one last question for Mr. Given through you, Deputy Mayor Hall. I take it that this is. A slate of. Proposals. Presented to council. With the expectation that council will. Pass these proposed standards. Onto Parks Canada. At the end of the day. Whose standards? Will they actually be? And who will be responsible to enforce them?
They will be, uh, our standards is the municipality and it will be up to us to enforce them. So if council adopts the standards that are proposed here. Uh, there don't appear to be any that would intrude into the requirement of a development permit. Uh, or building permits. And so they would not intrude into Parks jurisdiction. Uh, they do not go over the six month timeframe and so they don't appear to rush up against any. You know, reasonable consideration but for application in commercial cap. Um, and so, uh, and they deal with, uh, the use of, uh, public property. Uh, in a way that's already been approved at Parks Canada. So the application of these and the enforcement of these would all be up to the municipality under the commercial use of the space.
Yeah, I appreciate that. That's excellent information. If then all of these are within. Council's jurisdiction. They do not fall within. Land use, planning and development. So again, I struggle to see how motif guidelines, which I heard about earlier. Apply. Motif guidelines apply to development. If we can make the rules, it's not development. Um, on what basis do we then? Decide that, that we should choose the color of umbrellas?
I think, your worship, that's exactly the question. So you can choose to accept the recommendations from the task force. Or vary those recommendations. Um, my comments about, uh, the items that are here. I don't see them again intruding. Now, if there's something that Parks Canada takes a different view. Uh, because it is contrary to the motif that does exist for Jasper. You know. Then. Uh, that's, you know, we, we would have to deal with that interpretation if there, but there certainly is nothing in here that would be contrary to the motif. Uh, if, if, you know, if council, uh, chooses to vary one of these proposed standards or recommendations in a way that. Opens up interpretation of the motif. And that's where we start to get an entanglement with Parks Canada. Um, and I think that that was a part of the recommendation of the committee and intent of the committee of, of having some form of consistency was to say, well. We know that black. was to say, well, we know that black isn't going to be a, a problem with motif. And Parks Canada has previously approved building colors, so those shouldn't be a problem with motif. And so that's a way to be able to provide um, business operators with some level of certainty, uh, that would allow for differentiation. Some level of differentiation if this sort of setting was important, um, while also avoiding, um, uh, intrusion into that sort of federal realm of the motif and also ensuring that there's some level of consistency that reflects well on the destination. Uh, that was another consideration. How about ensuring that these installations reflect well, uh, on our, uh, community that is a, in a Esco World Heritage Site and is a, uh, you know, uh, magnet for international visitation. Uh, I think the committee reflected that view as well, saying, well, we want to make sure that, that whatever we do it's going to reflect, we can know that it's going to reflect well on the destination. So there's sort of three different considerations there.
Counselor Wilson.
Uh, Mr. You, you clarified what we decided was building colors because, you know, what also has been approved by the, or by Parks Canada under the architectural motif was, uh, was signs. Uh, so I think the signs. Yeah, anyway, I don't want to speak it further. I'd just like to hear what we kind of came to conclusion about.
Yeah, I, you know, I think the, the committee acknowledged that their, you know, signs are currently in the jurisdiction of Parks Canada. Uh, there are signs installed in front of businesses, uh, in, in the municipality that would supposedly have been approved by Parks at some point, uh, and those colors must have been okay. Uh, and, uh, and they exist, um, as well as the building colors. And all of those things would have been approved by Parks at some time. So I think the suggestion maybe here is, well, those, those things already exist out in the streetscape. Uh, having previously been approved by Parks in different contexts, and those should be reasonable ones, uh, to continue to use.
Counselor Wilson.
So just follow up with that. If, if, if you did feel like it's too constricting that, uh, we're suggesting building colors. Well, it's, you know, building colors, maybe there's a, uh, uh, an edit there where you see, where you include signs, you know? So then umbrellas could be yellow or green or, or whatever sign maybe uh, to add a little bit of flair to the streetscape, but that's, uh,
Counselor Devota.
I'm just wondering, and this is just again, uh, philosophical question. Um, in our consideration, um, what an application of land use, planning and development might mean to the municipality. Um, you know, where does, where does a committee like PDAC fall after that? If, I think, if we came into because this, the, the, the main reason we're in this is because it was deemed by that group uh, that, um, those changes and those colors and stuff were unsightly to the community. So, um, those were recommendations to Parks Canada, Parks Canada's, um, going along with those recommendations. Again, from my understanding. Um, and again, if there was, uh, if, if ball was in, in our court, I think we would be able to make different decisions because I, I, I understand what the mayor is saying and he's, he's right in my opinion that, you know, this isn't a building code or teeth that um, is, so everything, that could come up in conversation, you know, with Parks Canada, we can find that one. Um, you know, I'd like to move this forward and, um, from the working group and then for us to, to figure battles, um, if need be, with our higher agencies, I guess, at the moment in that department.
Thank you for the comments, questions. Also. I see no hands. I am looking for a motion. Is Counselor Wilson?
I, if there is no, um, no, no one out there that wants to make any edits, I would, uh, put the recommendation forward as it is now. Anybody? No edits? I'll put, I'll put it forward and then maybe there's a friendly amendment up there. Uh, I would, uh, recommend, sorry. Uh, I would make a motion that committee recommend council approve the proposed standards for patio seating, uh, recommended by the commercial use of the chase task force. And the committee direct administration to work with Parks Canada to implement the proposed standards, uh, and for the twenty twenty-three season and beyond.
Thank you. Need to debate or friendly amendments to the motion? Mayor Ireland.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Hall. Perhaps it's premature. Welcome back to us next week in any event, but if the motion is approved, what is the status of the last three items, all of which have the word should? Like, to me, there is just a lack of certainty about what we're doing. So we should develop a set of template designs, um, people should get three years and others should get five years. Is it? What do we mean by that? Should, do we mean shall? Uh, hey, where does it leave us? We have to vote on this next week. I don't know where we stand, but with respect to what we think about those items, I'd happy to debate it again next week, but it's just I wonder whether we know where, what we intend to do.
CEO Given.
Sure, Deputy Mayor Hall. So I think those additional considerations, uh, are really operational in nature and advise the municipality on how we might want to, um, administer the program. Uh, and, you know, they're, they are advice to the municipality, uh. So if we can find a way to develop a set of template designs, um, then administration do so unless council, you know, directed it, uh, and said, you must do this administration. We have a look and see if we can find the funds to do it. Maybe we would, maybe we wouldn't. Uh, council could give direction on any of those, uh, additional consideration ones, or if you just sort of adopt them uh, as the, the standard as a whole, uh, then you can, uh, then administration will consider, um, where we have the ability to, to do those. In terms of the last two, uh, the advice from the committee is that those who received approvals in the past and met the standard in the past should have, be able to continue to operate. I think that that is a, you know, uh, a principle-based approach. Um, as is the, the last one saying that if somebody meets these new standards, decides to change what they did last year, meet these new standards, um, that they should get a five-year approval. I think, you know, those are, those are about how we administer the programs. They're not really a standard. Uh, they're what, what we put on the, the application and approval process, uh, which is more of an administrative matter, but I think it's advice to the municipality from the committee. Um, and if council adopted these or supported these, whatever terminology, um, approved both standards, then administration would find a way to integrate these directions into the delivery of the program.
Any other debate or on the motion? Well, I'm in, Mayor Ireland.
If it's acceptable to Counselor Wilson, I would suggest that for the last two of the addition considerations, the recommendation that goes forward to council ought to be that installations that receive three-year approvals in twenty twenty-two shall not be required to meet the new standards until after their existing three-year approval expires. Which is definitive. It's not a should. And in the second one or the last one, installations meeting the criteria proposed above shall be granted a five-year term to guarantee financial returns from their infrastructure capital investment.
You accept the friendly amendment?
I do.
And did administration get that?
Your worship, can you do the second one, please?
Installations meeting the criteria proposed above shall be granted a five-year term to guarantee financial returns from their infrastructure capital investment. Shall, or is it should? Yes.
Okay, I will call the question. All in favor? And that motion is carried. So, was it my post? Oh, anyone opposed? Okay. Your post as well. Okay, maybe can I do that one again? Should I do it again? Does it matter? Okay, two opposed. It still carries. We're out of section seven now, so. Okay, and moving on to agenda item eight, motion action list, which is in front of you, council.
Deputy Mayor Hall, I'll, I'll be brief concerning how long it has been. Uh, you'll see the administration is proposing some changes and updates to dates and some deletions. Uh, just cover the deletions, um, the parcel GB development information. Uh, administration's aware that, uh, Parks continues to work with the developer. Um, we were under the impression that there was going to be something, uh, for Parks and the developer to share with the community, but we've been having a difficult time getting that information. I've come to the conclusion we're not going to get it before it actually gets released to the general public. So my suggestion would be just to take that as part of this. Um, the Alberta Japan Municipalities Twinning Association, there is really only one out of the, uh, item, multiple items that were on that to-do list. And that's the development of video, uh, to Kone. Uh, I think, uh, there's just a small matter of scheduling. Uh, and otherwise that item would be complete. So suggestion that that one could be removed. The community conversations, uh, communications, I discussed with Christine about removing this item. Uh, administration is investigating systems. There's sort of a variety of things that we could do to improve sound and the feedback we've received lately is that sound has been better and the key change is frankly, the people speaking closer to their microphone. So that, you know, I think that that is really the meaning for viewers is when all of us, myself included, speak as closely to the microphone as possible. And so there's a, a a zero cost improvement that's available. And if there were any additional cost considerations, administration could bring those forward in the future, but we didn't see any frame technological improvements at this time, especially considering the feedback we've been receiving. It's been, been positive. So that item we're recommending could come off. Reserve policy was delivered today, uh, as was the clean energy improvement program. Um, and at budget, we discussed the multipurpose hall sound system and council gave direction, uh, in the form of the budget there. So those are the items that administration believes could be removed. Uh, and then you'll see in the, um, uh, updates to the dates where we're, uh, recommending things coming forward. Uh, and if I have to answer any questions about that, that would be the recommendation from administration for updates to the motion action list.
Thank you, CEO Given. Any questions regarding the motion action list? And if there are not, you know, please have the councillor make a motion to receive the motion, receive approved. Approved the updated motion.
Counselor Devota. Just because no one else is, and I still think we can improve already visual. I'll take the recommendation for administration at this point, but definitely a budget consideration for years to come. And we could discuss that in January maybe. So I'm moving that forward.
Great. All in favor? We are all in favor. That is carried. Agenda item nine, councillor, upcoming meetings. Any council anything to report on? Doesn't look like it. Mayor Ireland.
Policies, I was slow on my iPhone, but I just to let you know, I have an upcoming meeting with the board of the Jasper Destination Marketing Committee, no, Corporation, um, to greet them on the status of our discussions with province relating to our initiative with Canmore Bank to get, uh, recognized as tourism dependent or tourism destination community. So that is happening later this week and I have a meeting also later this week with, um, the Chamber of Commerce, um, and it's left now, but regarding a proposal that they have for an event potentially next June. I will report further on those afterwards, maybe.
Thank you very much for your reports. I don't see any other hands. Counselor Melnick.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Hall. Um, I do have this evening a monthly board meeting for the Jasper Yellow End Historical Society. And I believe there's three of us who are going to be in a meeting of the Emergency Advisory Committee on Wednesday at one o'clock. That would include Mayor, pardon me, Mayor Ireland and Counselor Waxer.
Thank you very much. See no other hands. I will move on to agenda item ten, upcoming events. Tomorrow from four till seven PM, the Jasper Chamber of Commerce is hosting their Christmas at home. Sounds like there'll be cookies and some stuff. I might go, um, on Friday, the long awaited after a couple of years. The community holiday party, five thirty cocktail, six thirty dinner. The rest of the night's going to be a great time. So I hope everyone attends. Are there any other upcoming events I'm seeing? You guys see no hands. Moving on to agenda item eleven, can I please have a motion to move in camera? Counselor Wilson, all in favor? Probably say thank you very much to the public for tuning in because I don't think there'll be anything coming out of our, uh, in-camera session. So thank you guys. If there's anybody out there. Is there anybody out there? Great. Thank you so much for tuning in today. Have a wonderful rest of your Tuesday.
Need a motion to move past eight hours before we sign off.